Please enter your password or moderator access code followed by the pound sign. The conference is currently empty. You will hear solace or music on hold when connected.
We'll call the Stark County Commission meeting to order. It's Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. Let's recite the pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have the agenda, the ratified agenda. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add Suny- Rise Youth Bureau and Holly Prowse to the agenda.
Okay. Also, we have to add on the memorial bench placed on the courthouse property. It's in memory of Sergeant Wallace. Yeah, that. And then also, we need to decide on a delegate for the convention for this county, Association of Counties convention for in October on that. I know I was last year. I don't know if you want to point someone else or if you want me to do that again, we'll do that too. Anything else? Okay, look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Chairman Franchuk, I would make a motion to approve the, or ratify the agenda.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
A second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next, do you have the minutes for our last meeting on July 6th, 2023? Is there any corrections to the minutes? If there's no corrections, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes from July 6th as submitted.
Okay, I do have a second.
I'm second.
I have a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next, do you have accounts payable? Is there any questions on accounts payable?
I got one question.
Yes.
It's more of a question. Fargo Forum publication, they, they put our minutes in last month. It took like two full pages in the Dickinson Press rather than the small text. It was the big text. Anybody else see that? And I'm just wondering if we had to pay for them upsizing the text rather than the standard, smaller text.
So normally when we send in the minutes, we send them through the Dickinson legals. And I think that sometimes when they're smaller, but they have to send them over for approval if it's above a certain dollar amount. So I'm not exactly sure if they charged extra for the bigger text. But if it was over a certain dollar amount, they would have had to have the sign off.
Okay. Yeah, it was just, it was very large.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, it took more than a full page in the press.
Well, maybe they wanted you to be bright and center in there.
My eyesight isn't that bad.
Also, on the first page midway down there for Kim Cassie in there, it was duplicated there. There should only be one for, one bill for 230, 350. Any other corrections or questions?
I would actually, we're gonna have a lengthy discussion at the park board meeting about this, our restrooms and so on and so forth. And there's some additional billing on, on the park board side of things. I'm wondering if it makes any sense to carve out the, the park board bills or accounts payable into the park board discussion that we're gonna have later in this meeting. Make any sense?
Let's find.
So the 18221.92?
Yeah, I mean, it's not all of them. There's a few of them in there. But anyway, it means we can discuss now or then. But I figure, I mean, since we're gonna have that meeting anyway, wouldn't be a bad idea. So I would make that motion to, to carve out the accounts payable from the park board and move them into the park board discussion at that time.
For this one meeting or for?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, or we can do it, we can do it going forward, probably.
I think you would just have to approve them because technically the park board and the commission board are not the same. So you'd have to approve them after the park board meeting as the commission too, if you decided to do that.
Yeah, I think we can make a motion to approve all the bills with the exception of the county park, which we can come back after the recess and do that. I'm fine with that if you want to manage a motion.
Okay, so I guess I would, I would make the motion to approve the bills as presented and take out the park board accounts payable and move them to the park board meeting today.
Okay, do you have a motion to have a second?
I'll second that.
A second. Any other discussion?
And that is for every meeting? That's my question now, is we can do this every time or do we only do this one time?
I don't know. I mean, like I said, we have, we have a board, a sitting board. You know, we've got other people that are involved in that board. And maybe it makes sense going forward to do it like that. I, I don't know. I mean, I would, I would look for direction on that. I mean, just today, I just thought that we're gonna have this.
Well, that's fine.
A long discussion about a bill.
I didn't know how that motion was presented.
Okay, any other discussion? Not roll call vote, then Commissioner Claire's?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next, we'll go to the Southwest District Health Unit 2024 Budget. Sherri Adams.
There's two things here. One's the budget and one's the agenda for the joint commission meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
For the record, I'm Sherri Adams. I'm the executive officer for Southwestern District Health Unit. For those of you that are new, the district that we cover is all eight counties in the southwest. There are 28 health units in North Dakota, of which the western side are all districts. So as part of our budget, when we go to counties to ask for mill levy or a dollar amount, we go to all eight counties. And then we do a joint commission meeting after the meetings, which is the invitation that you got. That commission meeting, we need to have at least three of you present. There is an option to call in again this year, but we'll have it at the health unit. So if you want to come over, we'll probably have some kind of snacks. But anyway. So we changed a few years ago and asked for a dollar amount, working with our auditors. And then the auditors, really it's on Karen now, the Stark County Auditor works with the other seven auditors. And they come up with the formula that distributes to the eight counties based on the dollar amount. So I am here to bring you great tidings and good joy because I'm not asking for an increase again this year. So, thanks Bernie for laughing. The good news is, this is our fourth year that we've had not, we don't have to ask for an increase and I'm pretty excited about that. So I'm just gonna go over some of the highlights as to why. And some of the reasons, the budget itself has not changed a lot. So I'm just gonna highlight the things that have changed. If you look on line 10, we were successful at legislation, meaning the 28 health units were successful in legislation to get an increase in our state aid. We have not had an increase in four years. And so what that averages out to for our eight counties is we get about $85,000 additional dollars a year per biennium. So about $170,000 is what we'll be getting. The good news with that, that pretty much is gonna cover our increase in our health insurance, which is going up about $200 and some dollars per person. So that's kind of gonna be a win-win there. So we don't have to ask for an increase. The other win-win, if you look under line 38 where it says opioid, there's four grants that are highlighted yellow. So as the aftermath of COVID, some of these grants, they're not called COVID grants anymore, but they have been extended through mid-year of 2024. And so what's good about that is a lot of the staff working under these different programs, such as workforce grant and preventative grant and, and some of those other grants that are on there, that saves our bottom line of those staff normally having to put dollars that go against our mill levy request or our dollar amount. So that's gonna save us half a year of, of things that we can carry over. And so again, because we're able to do that, we're not going to have to ask for an increase. Pretty much everything else, as our costs in and our, our grants have not changed a lot. And we are heavily federal funded as far as that. We do get some state aid beating in the request of our dollar for mill levy request. The others, the other thing we request, and I do see Becky's here, is our senior mill levy request. That's a separate line item and that goes under a different formula. So those are the two things actually that come back to the county. We also do, are able to do consumer fees, whether that's license sure for in restaurants or inspections and, and water testing and some of those things, we're able to get reimbursed as well as claiming insurance for some immunizations. Other than that, we don't get a lot of cash in. We get some donations, but it's a very small amount. If you turn to the second page, I mean, we did budget in about a 5% increase going into 2024. That is not reflective of the number that is up there and part of the reason that it, it is a higher amount. We had two staff. Unfortunately, Joe Warner passed away. And so his replacement as a new department head was at a lower salary than Joe was at. And then our WIC department director, who had been here 40 years, also retired. So those two positions alone saved us about $20 an hour, hiring new people to take their place. So that's part of the reason. And then with some of the other programs, we have cross-trained very diligently. And so many staff are able to fill in and not having to actually hire additional staff. So when we hired personnel from COVID, we're able to keep them, but they've been able to fill into positions that either have been, people left or they retired. So that has kind of helped us. Also with that, health insurance, that also is not reflective of the amount that actually will happen. But some of the new staff already had insurance and they did not need insurance. So that also helps our bottom line. The only other thing really on this page, I mean, pretty much everything is the same except the salaries and the fringe. Now, I understand, just handing this to you today, you might look through it and have questions. And I understand that and you certainly can reach out to me if, if something doesn't make sense. There was a question in one of the counties. If you go back to page one, why is there a zero on top of the mill levy request of 2024? That's because I'm asking for that same amount. And so that's reflective on the third page. So our projected mill or dollar amount remains the same on the third page. And our projected cash in is a little bit higher. And then our cash out is a little bit higher as well. So it kind of balances it. We'll have some carryover, but not, I mean, it won't be too much. Any questions on any of that? Yes?
Sherri, thanks for this. Two questions, actually. How many full-time staff do you presently have?
Okay, so in the Dickinson area, we have 22 positions throughout the county. So we have 35 staff that are permanent staff. Now, they're not all 40 hours a week, some are 32. But we have 35 staff throughout our eight county region. We have about 10 contract staff that also work and those staff work with no benefits and such. But they also fill in in different positions.
And the second question, under line number 98, your travel was adjusted from 80,000 to 160?
So that, and that's a great question. And thank you for bringing that. Two reasons. Some of the people we've had to hire are either based out of Dickinson or out of town. And so we travel in the eight county region. And so they have had to travel a lot more. I actually have one employee that works out of Bismarck, drives to Dickinson because that was the only position, that was the only applicant I had and that filled that position. So that's one of the reasons. There's a lot more traveling throughout the eight county region where normally you would hire a nurse in one county and they would be able to stay there. We're not able to do that. We're, we're having to hire nurses in, mostly Dickinson that have to travel out. The other reason is travel has gone up a lot. So it's 65.5 per mile now, state rate is. And so that was the other thing. The other reason behind that, and some of that will be reimbursed in those grants, is that we're still gonna be tasked with doing mass vaccination clinics for, RSV is a new vaccine coming out, influenza and dare I say the C word, but that, those will all be coming out this fall with expectations that we'll be doing a lot more traveling and a lot more outreach to our communities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Corey has come by and did a tour of the health unit and I got him up to speed on the health unit. So he seems very much engaged. One thing that probably will change a little bit is COVID vaccine is now becoming privatized, which means it will no longer be free and we have to purchase it. And so the cost of that will be anywhere from 130 to 150 per vaccine. The new RSV vaccine that's coming out, that is being recommended for all the elderly, which will be assisting in most of our nursing homes, that vaccine's going up anywhere from 200 to $230 of a dose. Now granted, insurance should cover most of that, but not always does that happen. So we will see a little bit difference in cost of vaccine going up as well as hopefully our reimbursement from the insurance companies. But that will be another thing that will probably change on here because we just, we just heard what the costs of those vaccines will be.
That will probably make a difference on how many people from the public.
Absolutely.
Are gonna go and get their vaccines though, too.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we don't, we don't really project a lot will come for the COVID vaccine. But we do think there'll be quite a big push of the elderly population, I mean, that population now, the elderly population to get the RSV vaccine. So I, I think you're right. We won't be purchasing thousands of doses based on, but we, we are the support system for the nursing homes. So we will go in and assist them. We'll order the vaccine and give the vaccine in coordination with our nursing homes. And so that will help there, but that, again, those costs should be covered by the, by the insurance. Good questions.
Thanks for your report then, and we'll be working on the budget next few months on it. And also maybe want to make sure we have a quorum then for the 23rd of August.
Or I'll have to call you.
Happened before.
Thank you guys. I'll have treats for you, Bernie. Thank you, guys. And again, if you look through this and you have a question, Karen knows how to reach me. So happy to help in any other questions you might have.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm off the beach.
Okay, next through the sheriff's report. Sheriff Lee.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. July highlights for Stark County Sheriff's Department. Total calls for service were 1,596. This is up from 1,426 last year. 229 traffic stops, this is up from 217 last year. 327 public relations stops, this is up from 193 last year. 25 bar checks, that's up from 20 last year. Eight theft-related calls for service, that's up from seven last year. 28 K-9 usages. There's five truck reg stops. She participated in 34 other calls for service. Responded to 19 accidents, zero pedestrians, zero fatality, two hit and run, four injury and 13 property. Participated in 12 prisoner transports, 15 court, three medical, one juvenile, three assists for the counties and two mental health. The civil division had 212 paper attempts, 15 subpoenas, 112, excuse me, 102 civil papers and 13 criminal papers. There was 111 total arrests and 69 of those were warrants that we served. Fireworks complaints for the entirety of Stark County were down by 31% this year. The demo derby, I gotta give the ref rider commission props. That was probably the biggest one I've ever seen and it was also the most organized, I believe. We didn't have any issues and a little trouble getting people out of the fairgrounds as always. But other than that, it went very well, I thought. Got, we had the youth shoot and fishing derby out in Bellfield this last weekend. That was very well attended and the kids had a blast with that. We were happy to help with that. Got little Opryland days coming up this month in Richardson for the Richardson Taylor folks. And then of course, we have Harvest Hoedown. The weekend of the 19th in Bellfield, that got a little more condensed this year. So the Sunday events have been squished into Saturday. So Saturday is typically our busy day out there, to put it mildly. And it's gonna be even more busy this year. So be interesting day for us. National Night Out is tonight. That is, for those of you who don't know, that's an event that is held every year, the first Tuesday in August. First responders and other organizations put on a event for the public. It's free, free to the public. And they have SWAT demonstrations, K-9 demonstrations, booths for the kids and stuff. So I welcome all of you to come out and, and attend that. You can sure help at our booth. We have plenty to do. So any questions?
So as far as getting the traffic out from the demo derby, is there any suggestions that you would have that would make it smoother?
No, I mean, on our end, we, you know, we try to keep everybody flowing through that stop sign. And you know, it gets a little bit hairy when people are trying to turn south. And you know, we put one person to the south slowing down traffic, one person to the north. And then we have that person actually ushering people through that stop sign. But you know, I, I think that, number one, that's a dangerous position for that person to be in.
Yeah.
You know, it is what it is. But other than that, I don't know how we get them out of there. Like, you know, maybe Al can, can touch on that lane that we've been wanting to put, moving northbound for quite a few years. But other than that, if the DOT doesn't want to help us out there, then I guess I don't know what the answer is.
And the bar checks on there, is there any issues with miners on the premises ever?
No, we've been pretty fortunate. We've had some questionable ones in Gladstone. But other than that, you know, we have had, you know, I don't want to call out the bar personally, but there is one that we've been, had to issue a warning for serving past 1 o'clock.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your part. Next, Connie Rhodes, Alheiser.
Well, good morning, everyone. Just kind of rundown what road department's up to. We finished dirt patching yesterday and a little chuckles and stuff we had throughout. I'd say a number of years ago, when we went through and we paved all our subdivisions, that was one of the best things we ever did because we used to spend a whole summer dirt patching, but, but not anymore. We also finished graveling and scoring southwest of Dickinson and south of Bellfield. This morning, we completed that box covert that they put in south of Richmond with some gravel. And we're moving the trucks over to the Dorman Road. They've been wanting some gravel. So we're gonna move in there with a fleet of trucks and get that taken care of. Been getting a lot of complaints about rough roads. I mean, it's, it's so dry. You know, if we get a rain, the rains we get this time, they're so hard and fast, they just run right off. So some of them roads, we're actually gonna start taking a water truck and a blade out and just, you know, it gets so dry, producing, all we're doing, we're chasing marbles one side of the road to the other side. So we're actually gonna pick, pick up some of the natural finds that down deep and just take some time and put them back in shape. Like I said, this time of year, rain doesn't help us a lot because it's, it's everything's so fast and it runs off. So we're gonna do that and, and maybe some of them roads, we might put some mag chloride on it. I know Dun County uses a lot of mag. People like it, people dislike it. But it does kind of help, help keep things glued back together. So we're gonna be doing some of them projects. Corey brought up that lane at the fairgrounds out there. Well, you know, we've beat that horse pretty hard over the years. When we actually built the fairgrounds, we tried to get with the DOT to put a turn lane in. They should, then they put a pass-through lane in, but nobody uses it. I mean, it's on the right-hand side. Nobody likes to pass on the right-hand side. So I don't know. I visit with the DOT if we could sign it differently. So people actually, when you're making a left-hand turn, you go to the right. People don't tend to do that, like passing on the shoulder. So we're kind of working on that. And other than that, without putting a dedicated left-hand turn lane and acceleration lane heading to the south, I mean, to the north. Yeah, it's 55. I think the speed limit slowed down till it gets past the old Stephis Church for instance, and I think it gets back up to 65. The state is really tough about signing and changing things. And I mean, that's their little piece of the road and they're pretty strict on how they do things. But I agree, unless we put some temporary signs up, we'd have to get their permission during in a big event. Yeah, I, I agree.
We do have the sheriff's department out there with their cars slowing traffic down, but it doesn't do probably much.
Yeah. Well, other than that, we'll just have to, maybe they'll come up with some ideas. Because I've, I've got the word to the DOT if we could put up, re-sign that pass-through lane. It's a nice wide lane, but.
Like you said, it's on the wrong side.
It's on the wrong side. People, nobody normally pass on the right-hand side.
Yep.
Well, it's, when they come in, it's at a slower pace. It's, it's like when you let church out, everybody wants to get out. So you know, it's not so much of an issue. I think coming, it's leaving. So. Well, I sometimes really wonder, the reason why they're so against doing that is that it's snow plowing season. You'd have to make, you'd have to turn the trucks around and make extra passes where they just zip down one side, down the other side. Now, if it, this road is super wide, they'd have to turn their plow trucks around to get the snow off. My, that's my opinion. I think that's probably a lot of it. And you know, and if that thing had something going on year round, would be different, but so. One other thing, now that August 1st is rolled around, we can use our cooperative purchasing. So I'm gonna get some quotes on some motor graders here after, you know, this month sometime. And maybe Bernie and Neil, we could get these quotes and look at them and maybe bring a recommendation back to the commission. And so we'll get that done here probably this, you know, after the first. Well, we're looking at four depending on what they cost. You know, we, we got some of our motor graders pushing over 9,000 hours, you know, so that's, it's getting time to replace them. The last one we had in, I mean, after the snow removal, the transmission went out, it cost us $42,000 to fix it. And it's not like there's, these have any issues, but I think it's time to move them and start updating. So.
Where were these last four purchased?
Oh, I think they're probably 2010s. So they're, you know, they're getting some age on them. So. But anyway, we'll get that done this month here and then we can maybe bring a recommendation back to the board this, depending on, you know, they've already did their assessment on them, but we've been kind of waiting till this date before we do anything.
How much does one motor grader usually run then? Or do you trade in the old ones?
We'll trade in the old ones. New ones are probably 485 to over 500,000. You know, a number of years ago, we've been 20, we bought one, they were about 380. So they've really escalated along with everything else.
The good news is used equipment's pretty expensive too. So maybe your trade-in value is.
Well, I'm hoping so. And you know, and we, our blades are well maintained and the contractors are always looking for good ex-county blades. So hopefully we'll get a good trade-in on them. But other than that, I really don't have anything else unless somebody's got something for me.
How about the bill for the Bellfield shop?
Oh, that's right. I'm sure glad you're on top of it. Yeah, I think it was it for electric sales?
That's where it's at.
Tom's Heating.
Oh, Tom's Heating.
Yep. It's $15,025, I believe.
Yeah, that's for a new heating system.
Taking that out of capital improvement, right?
Yes.
I look for a motion for that to pay, that'd be a lot of capital improvement for the Bellfield shop.
I'll make that motion.
Motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second? A second? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh? Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clares?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
And chair votes, aye, motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, go to Interstate Engineering, James Katermas.
Morning Commissioners. Couple brief updates for the design projects, uh, thirty eighth street southwest, bridge replacement. We finally received a response on our D C E review request. We are updating the environmental documents and resubmitting at the de- at the department's request. They did reiterate that the projects will be bid at the same opening, possibly setting the stage for more reviews, for more delays in the review process. And one hundred and thirtieth avenue, the one that it's tied to. That's a bridge removal. Scope and fee proposals are under internal review and we will be submitting to the DOT this week. Any questions on those two projects?
No questions, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Highland Engineering, Andrew Shrink.
Good morning Commissioners, Andrew Shrink with Highlands Engineering, uh, the first project here, B R J zero zero four five zero seven four. Uh, this is essentially done with construction now, uh, we walked out there with Al and the DOT last week, uh, got their sign of approval on that project, any cleanup items they wanted. Uh, the project was seated this Saturday, um, and Al told me this morning, he's uh, out there graveling that this morning, so. Uh, that road's open to traffic and construction's complete, we'll start working on final documents for the DOT to close that one out. Uh, B R J zero zero four five zero seven six on eighty-third avenue southwest, uh, we just submitted final plans to the DOT for this project last week. Uh, and this is gonna go out to bids here in October, uh, so our design's complete and we should be seeing that for bid here in the next few months. Uh, the third project, uh, B R J zero zero four five zero seven seven, uh, this is three different sites, we're proposing some low water crossings. Uh, we just submitted preliminary plans to the DOT on that a few weeks ago. I was just informed yesterday that they're delaying this project uh, till the February twenty twenty-four bid opening. Uh, they're apparently working on some guidance for low water crossings and they wanted to work through that guidance before we finalize this project. Uh, so I'm trying to figure out what that's gonna mean for this project yet, but uh, they are delaying us apparently to the February bid opening for that. Uh, and with that, I'd stand for any questions you guys may have.
Any questions?
I was just had a quick question on the first proposal that B R J zero zero four five, I noticed that the construction costs is at five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, state funding's capped at four hundred and sixty-three. I mean, is the balance coming out of county funds then, or is it, there's some federal stuff there too, or?
The balance would be picked up by the county on that, what happens a lot of times in preliminary planning, the scopes will change or construction costs change, which was probably the biggest thing in this case. Uh, these projects take a few years to come to fruition and with the changes in pricing we've seen over the last few years, uh, the initial scoping just didn't cover it, so.
That seems to happen more and more often.
Didn't, didn't you allocate some money for Al from uh, that fifteen oh five for this one, or no?
That's the one by, this one here is by Butterfields, that one that's, no, these, these here?
Yes, no.
Yep.
Oh, no, not the water cross, not the, the, the first.
The one you're graveling today, it was H B fifteen oh five, had some, that was the funding for that one, state funding through House Bill fifteen oh five.
So we, yeah, we we've received money on that regard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next to go, the Northern Plains, Jeremy Wood.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just a couple real brief updates on uh, starting with thirty-second and one oh seventh. The uh, grading and graveling project, uh, that's done, the road control's done, we had a final inspection, um, so that project is is complete. Uh, the paving plans are pretty much ready to, ready to go whenever we wanna decide on on a paving date or a bid opening date. Uh, next project is one hundred and thirty-first, that's a federally project over by Bellfield, uh, not a whole lot nude report on that. They're still looking at a late fall starting date, although that may um, get pushed back a little bit with some production delays with the uh, with the box culvert. Construction. Um, our one design project, um, forty-first and one hundred ninth and also one hundred and fourteenth avenue, we're looking at um. Bid opening sometime this fall with construction for next year, so. Other than that, that was, that's really about it. Any questions from commission?
Dean, that one hundred and fourteenth avenue, I think that question come up at the planning and zoning and that, that is the street that, you know, I think they were concerned cuz it's kinda narrow, is that what the?
Yeah, but I think we're a mile south of where they were concerned, cuz it's in section seven, the, that they were putting that subdivision in, it's sky, skyline subdivision.
Isn't that, well, we can check it up, I thought that was north of that road there, someplace, but.
It's actually, it's on one hundred and fourteenth, and they're 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 entering in there, but actually, I think it's that, where the section you were looking at was a south of that.
Okay, alright.
So you probably wanna look at that mark, cuz they were concerned about the width of that road there with the extra traffic there. Okay. Thank you for your report, next we'll go to K L J, Andrew Krebs.
Hi, good morning, Andrew Krebs with K L J.
Morning.
Um, on our wetland mitigation monitoring, um, we went out to the site yesterday to look at it and the well, it, the site is in better shape than it has been the last couple of years. There wasn't able to get acres for yet, they still gotta calculate that, but uh, it's looking a lot better, so that's good news. What we'll do is we'll put together um, the acres and then put together the report and that's usually sent off around September. So I'll be able to provide an update on more later on, probably the next meeting. Um, for the roundabout, um, we're still waiting, or the DOT, they haven't set up the project number for that yet, and then we're finalizing our, our scope. Um, that I'll give to Al and I wanna go over it with him since it is kind of a larger project, and the intention there is to collect the surveys this fall and then get going on that. Um, that one is scheduled for twenty twenty-seven funding, but we're hoping we can try to move it up uh, a year or so if we are able, you know, to get the project going. On the tip seal, so we submitted the final environmental document, it has been approved, and then P S N E plans, we completed them and submitted to the DOT and the county. So after we receive the P S N E comments, uh, we'll incorporate them into the final plans, um, so that'll be done this month and then uh, bid opening scheduled for November for twenty twenty-four construction. And then uh, Steve, he asked us to just do a plot review of that skyline subdivision, so we did that for him as well. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we go to Dickinson Airport, two thousand twenty-four budget, Kelly Brun.
Morning Commissioners, Kelly Brun with the Dickinson Airport. Um, you should have in your packet uh, the preliminary budget for the Dickinson Airport, uh, there's two sheets, uh, the first sheet has um, our. Projected income for uh, twenty twenty-four and then the second sheet has a projected uh, expenditures for twenty twenty-four. Um, the difference between income and expenditures this year's only seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Uh, in the past, um, we've been able to manage our budgets, so we have a little bit of surplus that we've been able to squirrel away and um. Save for a rainy day, but um, the cost of operating the airport continues to increase, uh, the cost of fuel, parts, employees, healthcare, all that. Uh, continues to climb, so it puts us in a pretty challenging um, situation, this is the thinnest margin that we've had since I've been at the airport. Uh, and way, going way back to two thousand and fourteen. Uh, if anybody's got any questions on the proposed budget, um, be happy to answer any of those. Um, the real reason um, that I'm here today, um, is to talk about some of the future um, projects that we have going on out of the airport. Um, the airport is in the process of completing uh, a terminal study. A terminal study basically looks at our existing airport terminal and um, compares it to the, to the. Prob- probability of of um, developing a new airport terminal. Um, we went through that study, uh, we had a, a meeting, I know Commissioner White and Commissioner Franchuk both attended that. Uh, we had um, representatives from um, some of our neighboring counties that also attended that. And uh, everyone at that meeting overwhelmingly uh, recommended going with a, a, a new airport terminal. So when we start having those conversations, the big question is, how much is that gonna cost us? Um, and I will tell you that the uh, the lift on this is pretty big. Uh, we're looking at roughly a thirty million dollar project, I think our planning number um, for the city and the county is uh, four point six million dollars. So, we wanna get that out and get that in front of you guys, so that as we go through our budgets this year and the upcoming years, that we earmark those funds. Um, if you guys are in favor of proceeding with this terminal. Um, one of the things that I have to do, um, when we go to um, request grants from uh, both the state in North Dakota and the feds, the F A A. Is we have to put a financial plan together and one of the first questions that they ask us is, is your local funding secure and do you have your local funding in place? Um, if we don't do that step first, then they won't engage in that conversation any further, so I wanna get everybody on board. Uh, early in the process, so that we have a solid financial plan moving forward. Um, the goal of this project originally was to um, have it coincide with the opening of the Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library in uh, Midora. Um, because of the timing legislative um, sessions and whatnot, we're not a hundred percent certain we'll be able to pull that off, it'll probably be a year after. Uh, that presidential library opens up, but again, um, that was, that was the goal. Uh, four point six million is a, is a big ask, um, uh, our projected income and our expenses, the mills that we get from the county and the city. Really just cover our operating costs and any capital improvement project um, that we have, whether it's um, you know, routine. Uh, maintenance or purchase of new equipment or or whatever that happens to be, I usually present that to the county and to the city and then they. Historically have split that fifty fifty, those costs. Um, so, the city uh, have a meeting with them this afternoon, that same request for four point six million uh, and local share will be coming from them as well.
Four point six for each one of us or four point six combined?
It's four point six for each, so a total of nine, nine point two million um, local share.
Local share also, other counties or just?
My next question was gonna be.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I mean, we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a great question. Um, when we were doing the uh, runway reconstruction project. Um, it was recommended that I go to, to the surrounding counties and and request um, to see if they would participate in that local share. Uh, we were successful in in getting uh, funds from Dun County and from Billings County. Um, other counties were less uh, enthusiastic about supporting, supporting the project, but uh, we were fortunate, we did get some financial support from surrounding counties. Um, it would be my intention to also approach um, our, our neighbors and and see if there's any willingness uh, to support this, this project as well. But, sorry, but um, they would not be, you know, required or or um, uh, obliged to do so. Um, the airport does have um, the ability to ask for additional mills, we can uh, request up to ten additional mills. Um, without having it go to a public vote uh, to fund projects such as this, maintenance projects, equipment acquisitions and such too. Um, but historically, the county and the city have both um, been more willing to to do a pay as we go um, situation instead.
Cuz if you, if you raise, raise the mills, then, I mean, there'd be a time limit of where it would end, right, or would that be just a permanent forever?
Correct, there would be a time limit.
So the airport, I mean, the new expansion, the new building that you're talking about, I mean, is it a giant expansion capacity wise, or, I mean, compared to where we're at today? I mean, um, what are we looking at here?
Yeah, so I, you know, the square footage, um, we're looking to right size that building, so a little history on the, the current terminal was built. Late nineties, I think it opened early two thousands, um, and it was built to handle about nine thousand passengers a year. Um, since that time, we've added on to that building three different times, uh, so that we can accommodate the traffic that we have. Right now, with the aircraft that we have coming and going, is fifty seats, so fifty seats, uh, we have sixty-three seats in our sterile area for, for holding passengers, which is pretty tight. If you're the last one uh, to go through security, you're gonna, it's gonna be standing room only, so we're looking at right sizing a new terminal building. Um, somewhere around twenty thousand square feet or so, um, would, would be the size, but um, we don't wanna, we don't wanna put ourselves in a position. Um, where we have a terminal that looks beautiful and is nice and big, but is not fully utilized, so. Uh, we're also looking at some um, architectural concepts where we have expandable um, walls, so if we. Uh, have a charter flight, um, which would be like a seven thirty-seven or a, or a, or a three twenty sized aircraft, it's like a hundred plus passengers. That we'd have the ability to expand our holding um, area, our secured area with some uh, movable walls, so we're looking at right sizing that building.
So what's the breakdown, you mentioned, federal funding?
Yeah.
State Aeronautics Commission and local funding, are those percentages or those dollars?
It's, it's based on percentages, so fifty percent we would anticipate coming from uh, the feds at eighteen point four million. Um, the state of North Dakota coming at nine point two and then local share at nine point two.
So, yeah, so we're twenty-five percent.
And terminal projects um, are, are a little bit tricky because not every square footage of the terminal is eligible for federal funding, so the only. Parts of the terminal that are eligible for federal funding are the parts that are mandated by federal laws, so TSA screening areas, those are eligible. Um, the, the airline gate, that's eligible, ticket counter is eligible, but um, the front lobby, uh, rental car counters, that kinda thing. Those are not eligible, so we try and do our very best to make sure that we get as much square footage covered by federal funds as we can, but. Um, terminals are, are tricky because they, they don't cover, you know, the t- the traditional ninety percent cost.
So annually, how many flights out of that, that airport?
So we do tw- we do twelve flights a week, uh, I don't know what that figures out per year, but uh, number of passengers. Uh, we're right around twenty thousand or so passengers for the year, uh, and that's passengers flying out, so if you were in and out, you know, we're looking at about forty thousand people. Uh, going through that facility in a year.
This, the current facility?
Current, yeah.
And you're projecting, uh, this new terminal could handle how many?
So the floor right now uh, is seventy-six seat aircraft, so we're looking at, you know, a hundred or so um, passengers, room for a hundred and so passengers would be able to accommodate that.
So basically eighty thousand people go through that terminal, that's what you're projected that it would be able to handle?
Correct.
Do you think we'll have eighty thousand people go through that terminal?
My question would be, is there any interest from other airlines coming once, if we do the terminal, was there any interest from anybody else that would come in and. Utilize what we have?
Yeah, so that's a really great question, right, everybody wants to know when's Delta gonna come back, we would love to be able to fly to Minneapolis, right? And I always say that um, when the demand is there, they'll return. Um, right now, the demand just isn't, that, isn't there, it, they, there's not enough um, traffic going to Minneapolis. Um, to make it a profitable for, for the airline.
I understand, I'm just saying with, you know, opening the eyes of some of these people with a new runway and new terminal.
Yep.
You know, a little bit of promotions and stuff, could we reach that?
I think we definitely could, I think the most likely thing that you'll see um, is um, Sun Country Allegiant type charter flights.
Well, that'd be great too.
Yeah, where, you know, they fly to different events, you know, the frozen four national finals rodeo or um, you know, the, the, the um. The Bison, you know, championship game. um, you know, the, 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 um, the Bison, you know, championship games down in Fresno, which we've been. Yeah, accustomed to, so, but that would be the likely first um, thing that we would see would be a lot, those larger charter operators come in.
I mean, just looking at the fact that, you know, if we're looking at this much money and then the public comes to us and say, what was the need for it, you know, that's trying to make a balance.
Yeah.
You know, I know uh, you had someone from the board go and visit Watertown Pier and Aberdeen airports, correct?
Yep, that's right.
And them are all fairly new airports.
They are.
And do you know what the cost of all those airports were? Watertown's probably comparison to the same size, Aberdeen's roughly sixty thousand.
Correct. Um, that's a great question. I, I don't have that number for you, I'm sorry.
So with the, at the height of the oil boom, how many flights do we do annually or how many people went through that terminal annually?
Forty-eight thousand-ish implements, um, so double that, so we're, you know, getting close to a, a hundred thousand uh, people going through that facility in a year was, I don't care to go back to that.
Do you have the ability to extract the sta- statistics of, let's say, for example, a fifty mile radius around Dickinson who are now driving to Bismarck using Delta?
I'm sure that could be done, but that's a difficult um, order. Uh, they have what they call originations, right? Um, there are uh, consultants out there that have access to the origination destination markets that um, they can get a pretty good idea, but it's hard to nail down a precise number.
But I mean, if we could draw all the way to, to Glendive actually.
You know, fifty probably this way, but the rest, you're right, absolutely.
Glendive Bowman.
You know, I don't think there's really any question that the, probably the terminal could be updated and expanded, but I just question whether or not it needs to be doubled. You know, cause ultimately that number, it falls on us.
Like any other building you add on, you add on, you add on, what do you have then? A box with a bunch of boxes added on to it?
Yeah, uh, when we went through the terminal study, one of the um, issues that the architects and the engineers had was that the building has been added on so many times that there's, there aren't really any good bones uh, to be able to, to add on something substantial um, to the, to the current terminal, which is challenging. Um, I'll, a- another um, uh, issue that the airport is dealing with right now. So as I mentioned, you know, seventy-six seats is the floor, right? That's, that's the bottom. Um, and right now, um, our TSA agents have to hand screen every single bag that goes on the plane. We don't have the room or the ability to expand, to be able to bring in uh, the equipment that's available to automize, uh, automate that process. Um, so it's very time consuming, um, and if we increase that by fifty percent, then it's, it's, it's gonna be hugely challenging for the, for the TSA to, to screen all those bags in a timely manner.
You know, one thing, I, I noticed your budget's fairly tight this year, you know, and I just look at, you know, one thing that people don't consider when they build something big is the O and M of this thing.
Right.
You know, so you have to turn a lot of bodies through that thing to, to make sure that you've got the revenue to take care of what you built too.
Correct.
I just had a question, Kelly, as far as the four point six million, were you needing more of a pledge? Or is that supposed to be spread out over a couple of years or how?
Yeah, the idea is to have it spread out over, or, over a number of years, you know, instead of coming in, we, the way it usually works is we expend all the federal money, we expend all the state money, and then the local share is what's remaining, right? So the goal is to, to, to get this in front of everybody so that we can budget this out over a period of, you know, four years, hopefully no longer than four, um, but that, that's the goal.
So initially, you wouldn't need the dollar amount right up front, you just need the pledge that.
Correct, yeah.
And these numbers that you have are pretty solid numbers, I guess.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't anticipate that they'd go down. I don't think the cost of construction's gonna uh, see any declines in the future. Um, but um, yeah, it, they're pretty solid.
Any, anything in there buffered in for inflation or, you know, cost of materials going up? Or is this just a flat-out number of what it is today and it's not gonna be built for three years, so where are we gonna be at?
Yeah, so we base these numbers on actual construction date, which would be two years, you know, by the time we actually start moving dirt. So they are based on um, when we're actually in the start construction.
I'd have a question for Kelly, did, in that plan, was the plan to bring water and sewer from the city out there?
Yeah, that's, that's been on the um, one of the talking points for a long time. But um, I, you know, as we dig into this and we look at the cost of bringing out water and sewer compared to um, uh, you know, upping our capacity and, and treating our uh, s- sewage and, and, and having our water on site uh, or utilizing our Southwest Water. Um, those are all questions that have yet to be answered with a, with a firm yes or no, one way or the other.
Thank you.
I know that um, you know, past conversations in regards to water and sewer too is uh, the fairgrounds, right? Um, the fairgrounds would like to have water and sewer out there as well, so um, you know, moving forward, those are discussions that we'll have to have, uh, and see if we can come up with uh, a plan that works for everyone involved.
Has there been any estimate of what the cost would be to bring water and sewer in?
You know, we looked at it a number of years ago, uh, it's probably five years or so and it was somewhere around twenty million. I think the most, uh, most of that cost came from um, uh, returning sewer back to town. It required a couple of lift stations, uh, and they were expensive. That's where a lot of the cost came in.
That would just open the door for more subdivisions and further development for the city to move in that direction, I think.
It, it definitely would.
And so that would reduce the cost in, in some ways because it would get divided up by more, more people.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So just one more, I wanted to give everyone a reminder, um, tomorrow we have our ribbon cutting for the uh, uh, opening of our runway project. Everyone um, should have got an Evite, and if you were overlooked, I apologize. But tomorrow, uh, out at the airport at the um, FBO at Western Edge, big hangar out there, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting and uh, barbecue lunch, so if you don't have anything going on tomorrow about eleven o'clock and you wanna come out for lunch, yeah. Uh, love to see you out there.
You'll be there by ten thirty, get on the bus, right?
Yeah, we're gonna do the ribbon cutting ceremony out on the runway. Um, yeah, about ten thirty, bus load up, haul everybody out there and have a little ceremonial ribbon cutting and, and then come back and have a good lunch.
Okay. See you tomorrow then, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your support, appreciate it.
Next, you have a Stark Council on Aging, two thousand twenty-four budget, Becky Russell.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Becky Russell. I'm the president of the Stark County Council on Aging. And the Council on Aging basically speaks on behalf of all of our senior centers, Southwest District Health Unit and also for elder care. Um, in years past, again, heartfelt thank you to this board because of the monies that have been given to our seniors to help them live, to help them eat, to help them travel. I don't think some of you realize all of the work and all the hands that take part in that. Um, at one of the last meetings we had, there was a quote I brought up that said, do not regret growing older. It is a privilege denied to many. And I think as we here in Stark County take care of our seniors, they in turn take care of us, give us the culture, give us the history. So I guess before I kinda talk about our preliminary budget, um, there's just a couple of questions I have for you guys. Um, how many of you have had one medical appointment this month?
Only August first.
Okay, how many do you have scheduled for this month? And again, I'm just asking everybody, um, our seniors, how do they get to that one appointment? Their appointments are every other day, eyes, teeth, health, feet, um, you name it. There, there's multiple medical appointments they have. How many of you drove here today? I think all of us drove here today. Most of our seniors do not have a car, do not have transportation, do not maybe have children or family here to get where they need to go. And how many times will you eat today? Maybe three, maybe you're grazers and eat all day long. So what I'm getting at here is Southwest District Health Unit in their preliminary budget, they have reduced their budget this year. And Sherry had talked a little bit about that earlier today. But one of the things that the health unit does do is they have a health maintenance program. This has been going on since nineteen seventy-seven. And the last meeting we had, they had talked about foot care that they go out to do for some of our seniors. Now, many of us bend down to tie our shoes or you put slip-ons on. And sometimes some of us are winded, probably tying our shoes. Again, look at our elderly who have to look at their feet, um, make sure there's no sores, they're diabetics. And so the health unit goes out to homes, takes care of our seniors or really anybody that's over the age of sixty. Um, they look at rural, isolated, low-income minorities, anybody with social needs, language barriers, those with dementia, other disorders. So the health unit is actually taking nurses and they're going out to people that can't find a ride into town. Driving in general, um, we're looking at elder care's budget and their budget has increased quite a bit. Um, what we're seeing from elder care is that, of course, their vehicles are getting older and they're needing additional funds to match dollars that they can get to purchase new vehicles. Um, Colleen Radikowski was saying the other day, their programs have just skyrocketed. And it's because everybody is talking about their programs and referring their parents, referring their aunts and uncles, trying to get people to their appointments here in Dickinson. So again, they're looking at new vehicles to put into their fleet and again, they would trade in some of those vehicles they have to get new ones. And then also, how many times will you eat today? Um, Colleen had mentioned that they served almost nine thousand more meals in twenty twenty-two than from twenty twenty-one. And they're expecting another fifteen thousand more. And again, that's because the word is getting out. Um, they're delivering meals, they're delivering meals on a weekend so that they have a Saturday and Sunday meal. Um, parents and, and when you look at no vehicles, you look at needing help, these individuals don't just go to the grocery store and go, oh, I forgot broccoli for something I need to make today. They can't get there, so they look into the refrigerator to see what do I have to eat. And sometimes the delivered meals are the only meals that they have. They can split them in half, they can, you know, do whatever they need to for that. So we as the Council on Aging, we know everybody know, knows how important our seniors are. I don't think everybody realizes the hands, how many people it takes to get this done. And all of that comes at a cost, just like everything else does. So when we look at the budget for the upcoming year, I know I had submitted the twenty, uh, the preliminary budget. And as you're gonna see, Southwest District Health Unit is asking for seventy-five thousand, which is twenty-five thousand lower than last year. Elder care did increase theirs to three oh four, three fourteen. And again, that is because of uh, the need for uh, additional vehicles or replacing. And then again, the additional meals and their meal prices have went through the roof. And their meals have to be built on um, a good base of calories. It can't just be a ham sandwich and a little side of, you know, peaches and syrup. It has to be, you know, a good meal that they can eat. Um, tax prep, in the past, we have had uh, an individual do it for free, um, that may be dropping from us. So we just did budget that five hundred in there. Secretary of State filing fees for twenty and then miscellaneous requests from senior citizen centers. One of the things that, when we have our meetings, we invite all of the senior citizen representatives. That's basically, you know, Adams, Billings, Bowman, Dunn, Golden Valley, Adams, Sloke, Slope. And they tell us what they're doing for the seniors. They're playing cards, they're making noodles, they're um, having healthy steps come in, they're having the health unit come in and tell them how to do things. Winter's coming, you know, how to walk properly on the ice. Um, there's just a lot of people that are involved in their, in those senior citizens as well. And when we budgeted an amount in there, what we're seeing in our senior citizen centers is that the flooring is starting to chip up. Um, maybe their handicap areas need to be repainted. Maybe uh, there needs to be signage, maybe they want an automatic door because now they have to pull open that door. So there are so many little things that some of our senior centers are wanting to do and update on their premises as well. So in knowing that, you know, the mill is um, typically, you know, given to our senior programs, I know what we have asked for this year is, is going over the top of that. Um, we just hope that there can be some consideration for, you know, some of the expenses that have gone sky high, especially for um, elder care in particular. Any questions that you have for me?
Any questions? Okay, thank you for your report. We'll be working on our budget the next few months.
Remember, don't eat more than three times today. I didn't, you just caught my eye first. Thank you so much.
Okay, next we have a scheduled uh, meeting online with uh, TC Energy.
Can you hear us, okay?
Yes.
Just state your name please for the record and go ahead.
Yes, so good morning commissioners, my name is Tayla Snap, T A Y L A. Last name Snap, S as in Sam, N A P P.
And hi, good morning, my name is Kate Klossner, K A T E, K L O S S N E R.
Um, we would like to thank you, did you get our names or do you need?
That's fine, yes.
You guys, sounds, uh, so thank you for taking time on your day um, for us on your calendar this morning, commissioners. Um, we'd like to introduce ourselves uh, first, so I'm Tayla Snap. I'm a state government and community relations specialist for TC Energy uh, in the state of North Dakota. Uh, for a little bit of background, I grew up on a farm and ranch in central Montana and I live in Townsend today. And I uh, have worked for TC Energy for the last five years as a liaison to communities uh, just like yours.
Perfect, thanks Tayla. And my name's Kate Klossner and I'm the Government Affairs Manager for Marathon Petroleum. Um, I moved back to the Midwest from Alaska a few years ago. Um, and I am our Government Affairs Manager over a seven-state region, um, including North Dakota. So I support our two refineries in North Dakota, our pipeline, um, our natural gas gathering and now our soybean crush plant, um, it, it just right outside Spiritwood. So I'm happy to be here with you today. Thank you so much for taking time to uh, let us speak to you, especially virtually, which I realize is not preferred, but uh, we will see, I think, many of you next week, so.
Again, as you hear, both Kate and I are from two different companies, uh, but we'd like to introduce ourselves today as the Prairie Horizon Hydrogen. Um, it's a joint venture between TC Energy and Marathon in which we are looking uh, to advance our low-carbon energy solutions on both of our portfolios.
So as Tayla said, Prairie uh, Horizon Hydrogen, so many of you may have heard of it um, through the grapevine under a different name. We had um, recently changed it uh, as a project, it was being called Project Liberty. Uh, but the formal name is Prairie High, High Horizon Hydrogen and we're still tripping over it. So uh, thank you for giving us grace there. But it is in the exploration phase of a hydrogen production and ammonia plant, um, along with other associated facilities that would be just north of our Patterson Rail Terminal, which is the which is the former BOE rail terminal across the street from our refinery in Dickinson. So that should be part of the ETC of the city of Dickinson and right there in Stark County. So like I said, we're in the very early stages of this proposed project, very much in the exploration and early engineering phase. But consistent with both of our company's core values, it was important for us to make sure that we were engaging with our most important stakeholders, and that's the people who live in the county, which we hope to call home.
And we'll be hosting a community-wide open house for all of the folks in Stark County on Wednesday, August 23rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Dickinson State University's at the BAC. We've mailed out postcards to everybody in the community, so hopefully they will begin receiving them early next week. And we would also, we'll also be sending you over a formal invitation in your email as well. And we would like to also let you know that we have coordinated and invitational landowner meeting for the landowners that are roughly within a mile of our proposed site for the evening before, which will be on Tuesday. And that's just to give them a bit more time to process things and to have kind of more one-on-one conversation with our two teams. We've had initial conversations with state and local leaders in the community, and we'll continue to work with them as partners in this project and development stages. We've been working hand-in-hand with North Dakota's Energy and Environmental Research Center, as well as the North Dakota State University's Agriculture Economics Team, trying to drum up that economic impacts, and we're still working on getting those. And we'll be sure to share them as we have it. And really hoping that this development of infrastructure is benefits not just Stark County, but also the region of western North Dakota.
And you may have heard in late fall last year, our companies in this project, we applied and were awarded a Clean Sustainable Energy Authority grant for the engineering portion of this project. And so that is the portion that we are working on now, which is the, like I said, initial exploration and engineering. We've also applied for one of the Department of Energy's Hydrogen Hub grants as well. And we have been shortlisted this spring, and we're very hopeful because later this week, we have been down-selected even further to as one of the projects that's coming in for initial interviews. And so we're hopeful that we will be awarded that DOE Hydrogen Award later this year, and so stay tuned.
And that's kind of what we have for you today. Again, very early stages of this project. Just wanted to get in front of you and let it be known to the public on the official record. And we're both, Kate and I, are both available for any questions or comments that you may have today, tomorrow, in the going months. We will continue to keep you posted. We will be back giving you more updates as the development progresses. But this is all we have for today. So thank you for your time.
And you should have received your own invites to our community meeting. But we do hope that all of you will be able to take the time to come out to the community meeting. At that point, we will be hopefully a little bit farther along. We'll also have our subject matter experts that can speak to very specific areas of the project and answer also your questions, but the community's questions about various impacts.
As I like to say, we know a lot about, a little about a lot of things, not a lot about anything. That's my favorite quote. That's all we have. Do you have any questions, Commissioners?
Any questions?
So this is between the BOP and Highway 10, south of Highway 10. Do you know how much space it's going to take up? That might be a little premature question.
I don't have that exact number in front of me. But if you, yeah, if you look at the land south of the highway, north of our Patterson Rail Terminal and, gosh, I'm directionally challenged, I want to say west of our refinery, it's that, it's that plot of land.
The two pieces directly above the rail loops.
All right, thank you.
And we are, yeah, yep.
Any other questions? Thank you for talking to us today and informing us, and then we'll be keeping up with data with that.
Sorry, we're having difficulty hearing that last.
I said, thank you for the update on that, and we look forward to any further information down the road. We'll be seeing you at the open house.
Yes, look forward to seeing you at the open house as well, and I promise next time we'll be in person. I'm actually at the county fair this week. It's our, I'm on the fair board. So I took this week off, but I wanted to get in front of you, and so we promise we'll be in person next time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Next, we start development, Ryan Gillick.
Thanks. Good morning, Chairman Franchuk and Commissioners. My name is Ryan Gillick. I'm with Stark Development Corporation. We're the Economic Development Office for Stark County. And I wanted to just introduce, Linda Steve is here from the JDA. She's the President of the JDA Board. You know, and as you know, the JDA is kind of the way that we contract services to the county for economic development. And so on behalf of the JDA and of course Stark Development Corporation, first and foremost, I want to thank you for that.
I interrupted, but for the people that are watching that don't know what JDA stands for.
Certainly, the Jobs Development Authority is the entity that JDA is. And so, you know, on behalf of both of those organizations, Stark Development and the Stark County Jobs Development Authority, I'd just like to thank you for the support that you've given us over the years and allowing us to work for economic development and do what we do. And so, you know, with that, I also, here is Anita from my office. She's been with Stark Development for 16 years. I just, I'm in the middle of my seventh year with Stark Development and had served on the board for 20-some years prior to that, before taking the director job there. And so economic development's always been very important to me. And throughout my history, my father was involved in economic development. I did my own thing and kind of came back to be part of this organization now. And so it really is a passion of mine that I look forward to. I've lived in Dickinson all my life. And so it's one of those things that I just kind of want to always see things progressing and things happening. And so with that, I have our annual report from 2022 in front of you. Some of you were able to make our annual meeting in February, and I highlighted several things out of that annual report. And I thought it would be good to just follow up kind of mid-year now and just give you some idea of where things are with us and how things are going. And so that's why I'm on the agenda today. You know, really, our role at Stark Development is to leverage, you know, that investment of tax dollars and expand and increase our tax base. And that always means a little bit difference to everything. And as you kind of look through our annual report, we do that by engaging entrepreneurs. We do that by business development and growth. We do that by business retention and expansion efforts. All of those efforts kind of trickle down to, you know, ultimately the diversifying and building a greater economy that hopefully helps everyone's tax statements at the end of the year and ultimately helps put more dollars in Stark County's tax rolls to be able to be used for projects as well. And so it is one of those, economic development is one of those tools that indeed does provide some pathway to earn money back. And that is really our role and what we do. I'll talk a little bit about some of the programs that we have. In the middle of your book, or towards the middle of the book with the colorful pictures on it, is Pace and Flex Pace. And it does talk a little bit about that program up on the top of those pages. The pictures represent projects that we did in 2022. 2023, we already have about another two dozen projects that we've currently done. You know, our 2022 numbers, we were at about $26.7 million of community investment that was directly related to efforts through Pace and Flex Pace program. Just to give a quick little synopsis of Pace and Flex Pace is it's an interest buy-down program through the Bank of North Dakota. And we're so fortunate in North Dakota to have a state-owned bank that provides those kind of resources. It truly is a recruiting tool for us. It does set us aside from literally every other state. And so that's a tool we use. That tool leverages some local dollars to bring in state dollars through the bank in North Dakota for those buy downs. And so, you know, in the book for 2022, you see that we did about almost $27 million in total investment projects. And that got us almost $4 million back from the state in grants to those local businesses that are on that sheet. 2023, we've been crazy busy, which is good. Of course, with interest rates where they are, an interest buy-down is a lot more attractive to a lot of people to get out there and truly is a catalyst for some of these businesses starting and actually being able to develop new properties or to develop new businesses here. And there's a sheet that was included from, I had asked Chad Adventure to just, you know, if he would be willing to just kind of provide some anecdotal evidence of what it has meant for them and for their organization. And I think he captured it fairly well on that sheet of what it means for, not only them, but for their business, you know, developing properties, putting properties onto undeveloped land and generating new taxes. And I think that states it fairly well. That interest buy-down program, this year, we already are at about $18 million worth of investment that we've approved as of our July meeting. And, you know, that brings in almost $2 million from the state into Stark County. And that 18, almost $19 million actually in projects that we've approved, you know, really do provide that type of improvement. There's a couple of businesses that were relocated here as part of that, and which will be new, you know, new manufacturing facility, one of them. And then just some new projects, enterprises that, you know, we just never really had here, horse boarding. We, you know, that's something that's becoming more important, and we've supported some of those kinds of projects. So in the past, when I started, you know, in 2017, we looked, Stark Development really was more in tune with strictly primary sector, which means most of your income comes from outside the state and bringing new wealth to the state. The state of North Dakota puts a huge push on economic development to incentivize primary sector. It is also very important for us. You know, we have that, the beauty of the diverse economy with Baker Boys, Steffes, TMI, all those different entities that really help build a strong backbone of our economy to handle the ebbs and flows that we have, whether it's energy or ag, that also contributes. And so primary sector is very important to us. You know, it certainly provides an avenue to support those jobs, and the trickle-down from that is extremely important to us. But we also understood that there's a lot of smaller businesses that need assistance as well. And that's really where, when I took over as an entrepreneur for 22 years with my own company, it was a passion of mine to make sure that we also addressed those entrepreneurs. And so for me, I'm proud to show those pictures of some of those individuals and some of those businesses that we've helped get established here to see that there's a very diverse level of activity there that we've been involved with in what we do. And so that's been kind of a fun program for us. Since, and I'm kind of a numbers geek, so since 2017, when I started, we've done a little over $130 million worth of projects just in that time through just Pace and Flex Pace. That amounts to about $14 million in state grants that we were able to procure to get back to the community to help build some of those businesses. And so that's been a good piece for us. As a result, it supports, you know, our total right now is about, over those, since 17, you know, it directly supports about a little over 5,000 jobs that are in the county through those efforts. That's Pace and Flex Pace. One of the other programs that we have, we have two different community development programs. One is our facade improvement program, and one is a revitalization program. Facade Improvement Program was one of those programs that kind of came about in the efforts to just help beautify the city, help get some individuals the ability to clean up storefronts and do some of those kind of things, and present a better overall and more enticing element to the community. That program, if you look also in the, you know, report from last year, we did about $96,000 in grants for that, for a community investment of almost $245,000. When we started that program, that's a one-to-one match. So for every dollar we put in, we'd like to see another dollar of community investment as part of that. Historically, over the course of that program, we've put in about a million dollars roughly in 17 years to that and have seen roughly $10 million return on that. So, you know, our 50-50 match has ballooned to, you know, a 90-10, which is really more than we ever expected. And I think it's, I would like to hope that that's, you know, part of providing some of that spark to get some of those buildings and things to work and try and beautify their properties. Revitalization Grant is a new grant that we have, that's a $50,000 grant for trying to bring buildings that are specifically vacant buildings back into code compliance and back on the tax roll. One of those properties in 2022 that we worked with was the former Stark County Social Services Building. That organization put almost $2 million into that facility. They were able to utilize $50,000 of our money to help with sprinklers and ADA bathrooms and things like that to put in there. You know, as a result of that one facility, we now have an oral surgeon in the community, which is a huge win for us. That was something that I was tasked with my first day of the job, was one of the sheets that was there as we were trying to attract an oral surgeon. So some of those amenities, bringing them back to the community, as well as other space within that facility. This year, we already, we have approved one of those projects for a facility that needed some fire suppression and fire alarms to house a daycare in there, which was formerly a Community Action Building. So that building as well as a building that is put back onto the tax roll as a commercial entity. The other one that we've been working on, and it's, there's a few that may seem a little odd to be economic development at first, but childcare is another need that we've addressed. And through our office, we have a $1,000 matching grant for any capacity that you add in childcare for any group or center license, up to $100,000. We've done $200,000 grants out of that in the last seven years. And both of those facilities, it was, particularly one was vital in them opening. The second was certainly a big push to help them open and were able to take advantage of some of the other programs that we had. To just express the need for childcare in our community, you know, there's a childcare profile that's put out by the Department of Health. On there, it states that, you know, 12 years and under in Stark County, we have about 6,200 kids right now. 59% of those children between age zero and five have both parents in the workforce. Almost 70% of children between six and 13, both parents are also in the workforce. That leaves a gap of rough, a need, I should say, of roughly about 5,500 kids that we need daycare for. We currently have 881 licensed spots of daycare in Stark County. So we have a huge problem. And that is our, you know, I mean, I feel like that is one of our gaps to workforce, being able to return to workforce, individuals being able to return to the workforce. And so I want to thank my board for being supportive of those efforts. And, but we've got a lot of work to do. I mean, that's still a long way to go to get out there. That 881, just to be fair, doesn't include home daycares that aren't licensed, which we have a fair amount, but they can only have up to seven kids typically. And so those don't amass to the numbers that we really need to get, to make a dent in some of that. And so childcare has been a big piece for that. In the last two years, we did 166 spots in 2022, and this year already we've added 70 spots as a result of applicants coming to us. I think it's very admirable that we do have a fairly entrepreneurial community that wants to be, have private daycares. I mean, they want to take those risks and bring those projects forward. And then lastly, I would just visit about Heartview. And then lastly, I would just visit about Hartview. We use some of our dollars to help leverage a state grant for Hartview. You know, they just opened on the fourth floor of, of the old St. Joe's Plaza. That has been a service that we've needed in this community for many, many, many years since we lost it, you know, a while ago, probably 20 plus years ago since, since we lost that inpatient care. That's something that we brought back and we, you know, we used some economic development dollars, just realizing that that is also a huge recruiting tool for workforce as well as a retention tool for workforce in this area. And so, those are kind of the, the highlights that I, you know, want to visited, visit with you about. You know, we have about a $1.8 million budget. About 80% of that goes directly to programs, 20% is, is our operations. And, you know, and so, everything that we get, I'm extremely grateful for and thankful for. And it is our job and our role to put that money back to work for the county. And so, you know, anything that, that we can do to, to help in any efforts that, that you all have, we certainly would be glad if there's any conversations that you'd like to have with us. We'd be glad to sit and visit and, and maybe some of you, I know a few of you have served on my board in the past and have been involved in JDA, some of you have not. And so, if there's questions or comments that you have, I'd be glad to sit for any of those conversations. And so with that, I would, once again, thank you for your support and I'd stand for any questions that you may have for us at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. A little break here for to go into the park board meeting. We can start doing this. We'll call the August meeting of the Stark County Park Board to order. Our first item of business is to ratify the agenda and make any changes or additions. Anybody see anything in there or they want to add or delete?
I do have one thing from the commission that Commissioner Claris had added to go through the bills, to pay the bills for the park board.
Okay. Yep, that's on here.
I wrote, I wrote it on yours. Just so, yeah, it's not on everybody's, yep.
Yeah, we, we have an item built, bills to pay per Paul Claris from the commission meeting.
Yep. And then I'd also like to add the community events spending allocations to that also.
Okay, and that'll be under new business?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to ratify the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to ratify the agenda.
Move to ratify the agenda, is there a second?
Call second.
It's moved and seconded to ratify the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The agenda is ratified. Okay, and then our, then we go to our first item of business is bills to pay. And I don't know, are you going, are you going to address that, Lisa?
I guess, Paul, what questions you have, the, the bills to pay, and I guess I can give this one to you if there's questions on specific bills you guys have.
Matter procedure, I think, I was just thinking about it. I mean, we have a full board, you know?
Correct.
We've got Randy here, that's not part of the county commission, and then we've got Jason on the phone, and I just figured it might be a nice thing to, you know, let this board approve those bills as they're presented. You know, it's not that I have necessarily, you know, questions or concerns, it's just I think it's a good idea for this board to, you know, take ownership of, of the accounts payable, including, you know, gentlemen that are not a part of the county commission that are on the park board. So, but I guess, I mean, if we're on that subject, I guess those bills from CMTA that came up as part of their restroom build project that we're working on here. So I'm assuming that, that Goldmark must, or is it Goldberg or Goldmark?
Goldmark was the architect and then they allocated out to three different entities for the civil, mechanical, electrical.
Yeah, and so they subbed these, the mechanical and, and electrical out to these guys. And I noticed that the bills are, you know, the invoices are dated January 31st of 2023. So has Goldmark been holding on to them or?
CMTA sent them to Goldmark. And then by the time Brittany got them to us, they were actually, the, the invoice itself was to Goldmark and we didn't have a W9. And so we asked them to change those and they still hadn't done that as of last month. And then we've got a hold, I think because Brittany's not, no longer with Goldmark and some of those got kind of hung up in their system, but they were billing Goldmark when they should have been billing us.
So can we make some assumption that these will be the last bills from the Goldmark bunch?
Yes, this is the last ones, yep. Other, other than we may have some additional with Goldmark based on the redesign, if we do something like that.
Yeah, and I think that's going to be in our discussion going forward. I noticed in the, in, in these bills from CMTA, they've, they've got construction documents, obviously, they, they put the work in and do that, but they also have construction administration, which really isn't.
It was zero on the construction administration. There was some built-in dollars amounts for them, but it was on zero.
Okay.
No charge for that right now.
So do you, do you want to read a list of the bills that we're going to pay? I mean, you've, you've got an itemized list of what we're going to pay.
I did from what was sent out from the auditorium, yes.
I did have some questions. You know, Brad Hardigan had submitted a bill for an amount for those solar cams, and I'm not quite sure that that actually fits under, you know, whether or not we should be paying for those or not. I mean, that's kind of up to him and I don't know if there was another one or not.
I actually requested him to purchase some additional cameras. We had an incident out there and they have one camera currently that could see only just the track and a very, very short view of the Speedway grandstands and that's it. We've had a couple incidents out there now that we're wanting to monitor, so I asked him to.
So there's security cams, solar security cams that he purchased on his own, because he wanted reverse for.
Yep. And I, and I told him those will be ours, they will be ours when they did that. He just has the account to hold those.
This is them that broke into the concessions, correct? And that was reported to the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
And there's a value of what was stolen?
Yes, I believe it was $2,500, but it was, their deductible is five on theirs.
There's still damage to the groundstands or to, to the concession that's their building. So I mean, we do have to take some effort to protect it.
And, and we purchased some cameras we don't have in the, in the budget when we get our budget information. There, there's some things we need to do about roughly $10,000 for installation of those cameras from Consolidated. And then we'll have coverage of every part of that facility, just like we do at the fairgrounds. And then the electric sales and the Consolidated Bill and West River Electronics, that was the lightning strike that I reported to you last month, that those are the bills that came in for those.
How about the photography thing for the kids?
Carla Leland Photography, that was for the kids' fair. So we actually had her come out as part of our community events funding to come out and take pictures of the kids and their families if they chose either with a little, little pony, which you'll see here in a little bit. But they will, it was just for her to come out and then she doesn't charge them, she emails them their photos and it was just a goodwill thing for them at the kids' fair.
So I'm going to go back to my original question. Do you want her to read off the itemized list that she has?
We can, but I, I do have some follow-ups on the restroom bill. So according to, how much have we paid Goldmark outside of the mechanical, electrical? How have, how much have we paid them to date?
Ooh, I'd have to go get that. I don't have any of those numbers with me.
I could stand corrected, but I see three invoices totaling $4,500. That to me seems low.
From Goldmark?
Yeah.
Because they're, what they did was they had us contract with each of the other entities and they just did their part to coordinate it, that's why. And that's what they bid was, that, that was their contract was 4,500.
And our contract with them reflected that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then the individuals, the A2SCMTA, you know, they had their own costs. So this one here was actually, 14,000 was their total, which they billed us for 11,200 total on this, these three.
14,000 was the total estimate from Goldmark and then it got broken down?
No, from CMTA.
That's what we've paid CMTA so far?
No, that's, that was their contracted amount that they anticipated being 14,000 and a lot of that was with the construction administration, if they should do any of that. That was all built into that 14,000.
Yeah, because I think those numbers add up to like what, 11,000?
11,200 is what these three invoices are.
Paid three bills from Goldmark, the way it looks. Earlier this year, yeah. So before, and that's, I guess that's my question.
So they're finished.
Are we, are we good with them at the 45?
We're finished with every one of the contracts that we've had for those. The contractors are all done with everything unless we redo something.
Do you have a copy of the signed contract you could forward to us just to make sure? Because the following conversations we have about restrooms, I just want to make sure we don't dive into that and all of a sudden somebody knocks on our door and hands us another bill.
Yep. You want, do you want all those contracts?
Well, whatever contract, I, I would say yes, so that we can make sure that we have no further obligations.
Okay. Okay, I'll send those to you guys. Then do you want, I guess, the Hudson Welding, there is $140.63 hose box blade repair. That was just a damaged hose that we had repaired for the box blade that hooks to the tractor.
That, that's our equipment out there, right?
Yes.
That's 100% our equipment.
Yes.
Okay. With that said, I guess I would make a motion to approve the bills for.
Randy, do you need to see these? Because I know you don't get.
I don't, yeah, I don't have that. I'm kind of running blind here. I'm, I mean, I, I, I would, I'll, I'll just hand this back to you. They've been approved already or we have a motion to approve them? Is there a second?
I would, I would probably amend my motion. I, I would make the motion to pay the bills in the amount of $18,221.92 for the county park board.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
So the movement seconded that we pay the bills. Roll call vote. Lori?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul? Neil?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris, can you give me that number again?
All right. So going forward, they have copies of that maybe in the, in the next meeting. Just have me have a printed one. I mean, they've got it all on their computers here, but.
Is Jason on the phone? Did you ask him?
Actually.
He's not on the phone. He's not here today.
Okay, so then we'll move on to the next item. And it's the minutes of the last meeting, the July 6th regular meeting, which we have a copy of here. Is there any deletions, corrections, additions that anybody has seen that they would like to make? I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes to the regular meeting are approved now. And we had, we had a special meeting on July 19th for the restroom committee meeting. I don't have a copy of those minutes here. I think they were in that email though, right?
They are, there are no minutes to that, is what I was told?
Well, there's minutes, kind of notes.
I don't have those.
Yeah, so Cory, Cory was nice enough and organized enough to, we could certainly submit those, we can approve those now or next month, once upon review, because nobody's seen them maybe, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't share, I just shared.
Yeah, he, he sent them to me and.
Then let's, let's have a motion to table the approval of the minutes for the July 19th, 20th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's moving and seconded to, to table the July 19th approval, table the approval of the July 19th special meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, motion carried. Okay, Lisa, now we'll go to your report.
So just the first thing on the list is the motorsports park and you can see the photos that I've got up here. This is underneath the grandstands. So we're getting quite a bit of, of washing. Here's another photo of what's going on underneath there, just from all of the issues with the water. They're starting to erode underneath there. Initially this spring, we didn't see anything and now it's starting to show up. So I'm not sure what we need to do with it. I just wanted you guys to be aware that there will be some items looked at and submitted through my budget justification when I write that. That'll be part of it. So not much we can do with it now.
Just normal erosion, not from a spring.
We don't know that. Don't know. It wasn't this bad in the spring, you know, there was a few little cracks there, but now it's just gotten crazy. They haven't had a ton of water on the track yet, so I'm not sure why that was. Brad just sent those to me the other day and we looked at it and it's.
So is, is, is that the condition of it now or has there been some dirt packed back in there?
Nothing's been done to it at this point. Yep.
Do they, do they have an event coming up?
They do.
Are they safe to use like that?
I, I'm told that it is safe to use. There is no movement or shifting at this point, but we do need to take care of that, you know, because it's two, this shoots down, it's the same one from different directions there, but it's right, right in the middle part of it.
Is that under, that's underneath?
Underneath the grandstands.
So no one can walk there or should be in there?
No, and it's not beyond the grandstand, so it's very, very interesting how it happens there.
Well, it seems to be a lot of dirt moved out of that area. Where did it go? I mean, is it on the track or where? I mean, it looks like it's a big, pretty good sized wash. You would think that it would cause a problem.
Right in front of the grandstands is the only place for it to go. It's flat right out there and, and it's kind of washed out onto their track or right in front of the track where the abutment is, but that's.
You know, Paul, there's a curb there on the south end. I think it comes out, hits the curb and heads out to the west and just kind of dissipates out into the.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Would that be something we'd fill back in before soon and put some bales in there?
I'll, I'll take a look at it and see what we can do.
Maybe put some straw bales or something.
You know, these hard, fast rains, you know, we get them at the fairgrounds too. They come off, they come off the bleachers and they just, they find that spot and that's where they keep washing. But I'll take a look at it and we can maybe get some shored up under there.
If you recall, at the fairgrounds, we had that the very first year that I was here, we had that washing and there wasn't that concrete slab behind the grandstands. And we ended up pouring that with a little bit of a valley gutter to push it up north because we were having this issue and we noticed it right away that it was starting. We put in some fillable grout and put the slab there. Cost us $90,000 to do it, but we at least didn't have a grandstand issue. So I'm not sure what this is going to take.
Is, is that what you're, is that what you're thinking here is like flowable fill or something?
I'll get a look at it because I don't know how else you're going to get underneath there with anything because it, the headroom is so minimal. Maybe we can pull some decks off and, but I'll look at it.
Yeah, not sure. So that's that. And then just a little recap of the Stark County Fair Association's Kids' Fair. This was right before the magic show started and our, our magician caught this photo. There were lots of children out there.
It was quite amazing.
They, it was, it was really good. But this was right before it and then that hill just packed and, you know, in the arena we had pony rides, which is always a favorite of all the kids. They all got rides on the pony. The vegetable race, that one was really interesting and the kids just love it. They get trophies for it. And actually Frank Klein and Kurt Stoltz do that and, you know, Frank's an old race car driver, so he loves to do that. And they just make vegetable cars and that's what they race. And then the petting. Um and then the petting zoo, that was one of the biggest ones, we had bouncy houses and some other things as well. Um but a lot of the parents even, um I caught glimpses of them petting, they had a Holstein calf out there real tall. But they were petting him just how nice it was, they had never seen a calf and so it it's really an interesting, interesting deal and. They love it and it just, it really goes well, so. That's really, that's all I have for on those.
Does the fair board, do they have like a website that they can put that?
We do, mhm, yeah, Stark County Fair dot net, yep. We have all of our events out on that one, yep. And that's really all I have for you for an update on.
Thank you. You can stay at the podium if you'd like. We're gonna go forward, okay, we're gonna go to old business. Um the and the fairgrounds restroom redesign discussion. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, Neil, cuz you've kinda been spearheading this thing and uh you've, you've got a pretty comprehensive hold of the.
Yeah, so you know uh what we had in front of us uh back in March or April. Which amounted to be a little bit of eight hundred ninety one thousand dollars. So what we did was we went in and dived in and visited with all of the stakeholders or the players that were. Uh interested or actually had bid the project and said we need to significantly cost, uh reduce cost. And so through an itemized list, we've, we've kinda done that uh anywhere from the site itself. To um the uh hopefully red- redesign the septic system, the building. Re- uh reduce the the cost of the building. Uh and we've gone through a whole litany of things and each of you have in front of you. The floor plan that kinda came out of our uh July nineteenth meeting. That we um would cut kinda like to move forward with and um. We're, we're, you know, I think part of the discussion here has to be how much we're kinda budgeting for this process. And what we're, cuz I'd hate to see us spend a bunch of money, rebid the whole thing and then reject it again. So um just based on what I know of of the projects uh and these kinda things. Moving forward and having discussions with the uh the three contractors, Roars, Toos and Kohling. Uh taking their recommendations, how to reduce costs and yet still be effectively that uh efficient. That's what we have in front of us. Um I see Jeremy's here, we're. Uh one of the things we'd like to do was in the proposal that was sent out originally was the installation of two. Uh three thousand gallon, new three thousand gallon septic tanks and tying into the existing drain field. And uh what uh met with Lisa out there and walking around, all of a sudden I see two covers, there's, there is tanks out there, so. The thing that came to play is can we use existing septic tanks and drain field as part of this process? And save tens of thousands of dollars. And so in visiting with uh Central Mechanical um on, because they were the one that had. Bid for all the subs, um I said, well, how many inches the elevation cuz we wanna use the existing elevation of the concrete pad that's there. And uh kinda tie that into the building without making a whole bunch of major revisions to comply with ADA. And so uh Central told me, based on the sketch you have in front of, uh they need thirty two to thirty six inches. From the floor of the um what the plan you have in front of us to the tank. And then we would need whatever additional inches we need at an eighth inch per foot. To get from the edge of this building around to the front of the south tank, so um depending how close we can move those. Um the building to those tanks, we may need another uh five or six inches, so. And then we were gonna have those elevations shot so that the, we could know what the floor height of the building would be compared to the floor height of. Existing contract. And so we've asked, kinda tasked Jeremy to do it because he's the technical guy and there is some previous. Uh renderings uh from twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen that kinda told us where those uh tanks were installed. And I haven't had a chance to follow up with um Jeremy, but if you wanna address that, cuz that would be kinda s- in my.
Pretty critical.
Pretty critical of what our elevation's gonna be, yeah.
Cuz if if we, if we raise the building too high, then we run into ADA problems.
No, I think you explained it pretty well, uh Mr. Messer, so what we've kinda looked at is. Um we can probably eliminate those two septic um tanks. We might have shift the building a little to the south and potentially a little to the west um slightly, but I think we can eliminate those two septic tanks. Still gonna be fairly tight with grade, but it looks like we can make what Neil is doing, uh proposing work.
What, no, he means eliminate the ones they would bid.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, eliminate the the two proposed additional ones.
So and that would keep the elevation the same as the concrete that's existing, or would, how much higher of would the building be?
It would be, I don't know the exact elevation, but it would uh. That exist concrete would be left as is, we tied right into that.
And then the elevation of the floor of the building, so anyway, uh the 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 concept would be. That based on the elevations you need for ramps and handicap accessibility, even if we're up a little bit. We're gonna be pouring concrete anyway, we can just pour ramp ADA compliant concrete.
Yeah, it's really the balancing act, if you gotta, you're building up high enough obviously to to drain to the septic. But low enough that you comply with the ADA requirements, which it looks like there's a happy medium in there somewhere, if if we're allowed to shift the building just a little bit.
Okay, so again, for the, for the record, uh the the major changes we'd be making to the proposed building, number one, it would be uh about. Fifteen percent smaller, we're going from over twenty one hundred square feet down to about eighteen hundred square feet. We would be stick framing the building versus the decorative block. We would be doing slab on grade versus a full frost foundation because it is a seasonal uh building. We would be doing on the inside of the building, inside of the restrooms, we would do, be doing a washable product, there's two or three of them out there. Glassboard is the most common name you would hear over a structured uh plywood for strength. Uh we would change from a uh uh seamed roof to a single slope metal roof, we would have metal exterior versus the decorative block again. Metal panels, uh we would stay at the ten foot ceiling height within the uh facilities. Um we would um be changing the heating systems from full fledged commercial. Two commercial furnaces there to uh some more simple, almost wall mount, what we would call them. Uh cove heats just to keep the chill off for events that are being held when it's a little chillier out there. We would be uh a more of a more simple exhaust fan system, that would be changing. We're also in the middle of discussions like Lisa mentioned, or somebody mentioned on with Southwest Water. So the way the current structure is, is that uh we have a two inch water line running in from highway twenty two. To a meter pit uh fairly close to the concession stand. And out of that meter pit, we reduced down to five eights uh line going into the concession stand. The uh mechanical engineer or somebody um made a calculation that five eights wouldn't supply. The restrooms with enough capacity in peak periods, so they recommended a two thousand gallon holding uh tank with a. Pretty high end pressure pump. Um we have started a conversation with Southwest Water to allow us to upsize the meter to a hundred thousand gallon. Per month meter, I believe, um I don't know if that's two inch, I don't, don't hold me to it, but we would be moving up to the hundred thousand. Gallon per month capacity, which would then probably in all likelihood suffice and eliminate the need for the holding tank and the increased. Pressure tank. What else? We added a second family restroom, uh there seemed to be a consensus that those were used and needed. We're still staying with all won't, wall mounted um uh products rather than floor mounted for. Cleaning and ease of use. Any, anybody else, guys?
Uh Commissioner Messer. With the revised changes, I mean, do you, it's hard to know for sure, but estimated, how much you, have you lopped off the original? Eight hundred ninety one thousand dollars?
I'd say we're less than half.
So we're in that four fifty range?
I would say four hundred's the target, give a plus minus, maybe ten percent, and part of that's gonna be what we decide today on how we handle the management. Of the uh construction of the project.
And and I guess that's my question. So do, we don't have to have an architect approve this?
No. Well, we need somebody to know, I don't know how high you place the ADA handicap sticker, that's not in my arena. So we need somebody with knowledge of that, that would would uh you know, sign off on all those things, the sizes of the individual. ADA uh restroom compartments. Um you know, I've built enough of them, but I'm not gonna sign off that I'm doing them right, but we, we would need somebody to do a review. But we don't need a fifty two page plan to submit for a building permit.
Right?
And then the question is, can we be the general on this or do we need to?
The, the bidding threshold is, is the question that I don't know and maybe Amanda could help, but I'll give you, for example. Um when we built this s- social service building, in that original plan was a storage building, okay? And there was kind of an alternate um building depending on cost, at the end of the day. Uh when the, got to the end of the project, they were so close budget wise and that building was gonna be twenty four by twenty four. But it was in the original plan with the construction manager there that that was an eighty eight thousand dollar uh building, well, they, they declined to build it at that point. So uh Mike is, who's not here today, you know, is my portfolio and he brings it to me again and I said, that's crazy, that's way too much money, so. We did that, uh you know, again, I did this, went to the, did all these kinda things, re- reconfin- well, we did that building for forty four thousand dollars. So I mean, there are ways to save money, but that threshold wasn't the two hundred thousand dollars threshold, we know this is more than two hundred. So I don't know how technically we move forward, I I don't. But each of the uh generals that bid are interested in doing um, what would you, you could call it a. A construction manager, design build where they would bid a oversight or an override on the product. And the procedure, because we know, but we would dictate what we put in there, that's, that would be the difference. So that would be one of the options you could do.
So, so we're, we're, who, who is qualified to make sure we're ADA compliant? I mean, when we did it or build out over there, rear visions, city made sure we were ADA compliant. Are they gonna do inspection on this?
Well, yes, they would, but they're not gonna sign off on it, they're not, they're, they're gonna want somebody else with, so that they're not held liable, right?
And and who is, who is qualified to do that?
Yeah, I mean, again, you can go to architects and do it. You know, the, anybody with a CAD program, so I mean, both our lumber yards have the CAD program could design it. And they would say it meets the design, and maybe that's a question we need to approach with the, with the city as far as making sure we're code compliant and how that would work.
So I guess, are there any questions from the board?
Neil did a great job explaining it all.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for that, so. Then we have to make a recommendation here as a board, we need to move, we need a motion to move forward with this building. And I don't know if we can decide today how we're gonna do that, but.
Shoot, is there uh? An option to look at moving forward and like get the dirt work done before this fall?
Well, the kinda, you hate to say it, it's gonna be ninety one degrees today, but we're, we're, we're going, we're in a time crunch to get this work done before frost, right? So each of the contractors' uh proposals would have been, get the underground done, do the flat work. And be ready by frost up so that they would be a winter project framing and all this kinda stuff, so it's ready for our events in twenty twenty four. But they're all wanting, they would want the go ahead prior or around by Labor Day, uh so that that can be uh kinda done, so. If that answers your question, I don't know.
Well.
I'd have to, I have a comment, one thing that's escaped me through this whole process is, has this board ever decided how much money we're willing to spend? I've never heard a number and be nice to know like, hey, we're all on board, what's the number? And you know, this has been a little bit of a backwards process. I'd like to see, you know, if we're gonna go forward, I mean, we have.
I mean, we, we did decide what we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars and set aside, we know that's not gonna be enough. You know, the eight hundred thousand dollars set us all back in our seats and so.
Yeah, I, I, if you were to build a house, Randy, you'd probably have a number in mind.
Well, and it, you know. For budget purposes, you, you can't, you, we're probably gonna have to budget about a half a million. You think we can get it for four hundred?
I'd like to think so, if not, I would, my next recommendation would be to cut one stall off each end of the building. That's, to be honest with you, that, that's, that's kinda my number.
We've already taken two stalls out of.
No, I don't think so.
Cuz we had took two, but we added one.
Okay, me, uh I, I, I stand corrected.
Well, not knowing how the bids are gonna come in and I mean, you know, it's just um, I know from my business. We get price shock every time we buy something, it's just, you know, so. Waiting is gonna cost us money as well and if we, Amanda, we have to advertise for twenty one days for bids too, so getting them. I mean, unless we can start advertising a week from today. We aren't gonna see anybody and then we'll have to award contracts at our September meeting for them to get started on it. Yeah, yeah. But we need to know how we're gonna get approval of this plan.
Right.
And I don't know, I don't know the path for that, so I'm, I'm.
Well, if we're good with the re- revisions. Um let, let us figure out that, let us make a couple phone calls to what the city would require. Let us uh have it re- you know, reviewed for some reason for all the compliant issues, ADA and others. And see if we can, you know, maybe call a deal where we can get it bid.
So who, who does it for Kohling and Toos and and?
Well, typically the plans are brought to them.
Yes.
So the architects and mechanicals and all those people are are bringing the plans to them and.
And that's what they bid on this last time.
Right.
That's why the bid came in that cuz the plans came, we told the architect what we wanted, they came in and they presented it and it was.
Yeah, on a public bid, but let's just say one of them are gonna build a sixty by forty shop with sixteen foot walls and. And an office in it for a client who approves their plans.
Yeah, so I mean, depend, depend on structure, so if it's an iron structure, you know, you're gonna have the iron company has a structural stamp. If it's a wood fr- uh frame structure, you're gonna have uh what they called engineered walls, that would say whether it's a two by six wall to a certain height. Or a two by eight wall to a certain height, the roof trusses are always engineered by the trust company. So you know, um. This is ten foot and under, so the, 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 the structural part is not an issue, to me, the issue that I have any gray area on is making sure that it's. Fully ADA compliant, because can you imagine if we come in and then, and then someone says, well, the uh restrooms are six inches too narrow? You know, right?
Yeah, but wouldn't the city of Dickinson, they have a building department that you would submit a plan to and and and.
Yeah, they don't think that, yeah, they don't think like that liability, so, I mean, I have a couple ideas and uh, I mean, you can go to an ADA website and. And they'll open it up and they'll say, these are the minimum dimensions you can have for compliance. Okay, and I, I'm pretty comfortable that five by seven, five by seven is, exceeds the minimums for stalls. And that's what these are set up in.
Neil, I'd have a question, would, would, do you have something that they could bid off us, so we got apples for apples or just somebody gotta put a set of plans together? So everybody bids the same wall, the same toilets, the same.
So yeah, you would, I mean, this, this plan is, is kinda dimensioned, so if you go, it'll say it's a two by six wall or whatever, you know. I, what I don't have is the make, model and design of the stools, because there's, you know, those kinda things, um so.
Everybody could be bidding the same, same. Oh, everybody could be bidding the same 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 wall.
Right.
We could probably ask for a couple of options from each contractor that that bids it, you know, um, you know, low to a medium grade type of.
I was hoping to have a budget, I was hoping to have a budget number today for the for the plumbing part of it. I don't have that. It would have been very helpful to have had that. I did give them uh the plan. I said, just give me a budget number. It's not a bid thing. Just get us a budget, because if if that budget number's really high, then we know.
So then, for, what what are they bidding, like dirt work? I know our road guys are overworked. Is there any way that they can be a part of that?
What I see for dirt work, also minimum, I see in the dirt work is strip the top soil and go to work.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, so that takes crosses that off of that equation, you know?
And and, for example, the original plan having the fence on the north side being tore down, and then re- landscaping and reseeding grass while you shrink the building and you move it to the south, that's no longer needed. The underground contractor that I talked to, you know, basically, I said, I know I'm cutting your bill significantly, but uh, you know, that underground to dig, uh, you know, a sewer or a line that would trench out to the edge of the building and then take that that building line and hook it to the front of the the septic they're building, and eliminate the two big tanks, all this kind of stuff. I mean, that building, that that bid is like twenty percent of what it was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Basically, what?
I'm willing to keep working on this, I'm, but I would want some help, cause, you know, I will be spending a lot of time with my combine here in the next couple of weeks.
So, so if we could come forward with a a s- grade or a specification for the sinks and the stools and the urinals, that, so they're all bidding the the same grade.
Right. And I and I think, to be honest with you, we haven't changed those that much. We're still doing wall mounts.
Right.
Uh, that we're still doing wall mount sinks. Um, and so the the thing on the sinks was uh potentially going down one step on hardware, so you didn't have the the the, you know, fancy on the sinks, but the stools were gonna be basically the same what you're seeing here, um, as was on the original plan. So I don't know if it would make sense. I don't know if I'm the plumbing contractor, would I bid just doing the underground and then not have the ability to get the? Or could we bid the plumbing and award plumbing and then have the other guys figure out the, I don't know. I just thrown out ideas.
One question, so I, the 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 original facility was gonna be a three sixty five facility, correct? Where we would have to blow out a system or anything. Will we have to blow out the system?
We would have to winterize this, yes. But you're winterizing the restrooms now, or the concession stand now, anyway, right?
Well, to move it forward, we're gonna need a motion of some sort here.
But what is it?
What is it? Exactly. Um, so going back to, we put this plan together. We bid it, we come up with the bid. Who administers this thing for us?
Then the general contractor.
The general contractor's taking care of this.
That's why I asked, or can we be the general?
Okay.
I think we could be our own general, but I don't think we have, even with me being in the business, I don't think we have enough expertise to do that. I'll I'll be honest with you.
So turn it over to them, build us a building.
I mean, so, you know.
And each, and most of these people that are gonna bid on this are generals anyway.
Yes.
I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here. So what if we get a contractor from Bismarck that we know nothing about, comes out and lowballs the bid and hits this thing? Are we gonna trust them to?
Well, I think we can take care of that, some of that contractually.
Well, and and you can get ref, you know, you can call in references and stuff, you're gonna.
Yeah, but it it doesn't matter. It's a public bid opening, and if they they draw a set of plans and they're a qualified bidder, it doesn't matter what their references are. You're you're gonna award to them.
Actually, it also says the lowest responsible bidder, so there's other criteria that can be looked at other than just the.
I've bid public works for forty years. I've never seen anybody not be awarded the bid because they were deemed not responsible. If you issue them a set of plans and they can get a bond, you're you're in a bad place if you get a bad guy as as the owner.
Well, I mean, and like I said, it can't, can that be taken care of somewhat contractually?
I think Randy's gonna be able to answer this question. Typically, when you bid a project like this, you have a performance bond.
Yes.
And that costs you money.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, what other, uh, you have to bring, I'm sure you have to bring liability insurance to the plate.
Yeah, yeah.
But that that doesn't, that's not a uh project specific cost?
No, you're gen, and for for me, for my work, it's not, no. For a builder, I don't know if they they buy building insurance like you do when you build a house or not. I I guess you'd have to ask one of our.
I mean, for us, uh, it is based on gross of your year, your liability insurance is based on that. So it it does have a cut reflective cost, yeah. But I mean, we're we're, if we're, if we are hopefully in that four hundred thousand dollar range, you know, those would be um not significant items.
So this is a, this is an issue that's, every project the county bids is the same issue, whether it's roads or if it's a building or whatever, you run into the same problem.
Okay, yeah, so if we we decide to budget four hundred thousand, and you guys, I'm not familiar with the budget process. You guys are more, and the bids come in at four fifty. Is is there a process for us to allocate more money? Yeah.
I'm sure there is. I believe there is, and there's also already, it's been approved for two hundred and some thousand a few years back, right? So there's two hundred thousand sitting there already, uh, budgeted for this project. So another hundred and seventy or two hundred, two hundred twenty, whatever.
Yeah. Two twenty would put you at, yeah.
I mean, I get where you're coming on this, Neil. I mean, I prefer not in this, you know, if you're we don't need the the number public, you know, you want them to just bid it, just tell us what it is. I'm sorry. Um, you you know, we want this to be a clean bid where they they don't, there isn't a number that they know. It's, we just want the building bid, doesn't matter what the budget number is. I mean, right?
And basically, basically, that's what they did the last time, even though they had a budget number, they still had to bid what the plans were.
Yeah.
But yes, I I.
I totally agree with you.
I I believe just, but I mean, after this discussion, everybody kinda knows where we wanna be and where we were. So we can put it out for bid and and.
But we don't know where we're putting out the bid yet. Well, that's what I would ask Commissioner Messer. What would you like to see the next steps before we take this to the?
Yeah, I would like a a plan that can be bid and 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 stuck to. Change orders are the most expensive cost of doing business.
Yeah.
So I would wanna avoid change orders, and um, uh, I think if we had some follow up conversations, um, if if somebody would help me, that we could get a lot of these question marks out of the uh, out of the way.
Well, I, and you you will have a discussion with the city about the ADA.
Yep.
Then we we'll need to write up a spec sheet to, wha- what, I mean, what kind of lumber? I mean, what kind of uh windows, what kind of fixtures, what kind of doors?
The framing part is, I I'm very comfortable with that. It's the mechanical part that I.
So, when you when you build on slab like this with the frame, uh, stud wall, do they have to use a treated plate on the bottom?
Oh, yeah, that's code.
Do not, I mean, I'm willing to help, but my knowledge of it is so limited that I don't know how much help I would be.
Yeah, and like I said, if if uh if if I have the time, I'm more than willing and happy. But if I'm gone for two or three days and something needs to be done, I wanna make sure I can call somebody and say, hey, would you do this kind of deal, so.
Has electrical been, uh, addressed at all?
Yeah, so there there was a electrical portion of the bid. I don't know if it was in the mechanical portion only. Um, but that included a, uh, you know, the big secondary pump. It included uh heating electric furnaces. Those were two double throw forty or sixty amp furnaces, so those are gone. So the, what was bid was a two hundred amp service, and that would be sufficient easily to um service the building. Then you gotta figure out what kind of light fixtures you want in, what kind of light fixtures you want out.
Right.
Cause light fixtures are like all over the board cost wise, so.
I think it, I mean, it, if you were ticked to all, any of these contractors that wanna bid it, I mean, they would probably flesh this plan out.
Well, basically, if it's bid, they're gonna go right back to, I'm bidding what's on the paper, because they don't wanna be at a disadvantage, right?
Right, yeah, they're, you're gonna get the cheapest fixtures and the cheapest lights, and 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 that's not what we want.
Right.
And and then I'm comfortable with Neil doing this, but do we just take this to somebody and say fifteen hundred bucks, can you?
Well, and that would be nice if we could, but I I don't know that we can tell me to do that, right? I don't know. Let us, we should have some more conversations, and then I can report back. We either can have a real quick special meeting.
Yep, yeah.
And uh, cause I would say I know that need another week on this.
Amanda, I have a question for you on the on the special meetings. I I just can't reconcile this myself. We don't have to give any days notice to have a special meeting. We just have to post it on the door when we call it? Or is there any lead time that's required?
I mean, when you know that you're gonna have it, and you get the agenda together, then yeah, you should.
And and then it just has to be on the county's website?
And the air and the spot that you're.
Yes, yeah, yeah. That is just bizarre to me. It just. So, we're we're not gonna make a recommendation. We're gonna just table this for.
Say we made good progress and we're gonna keep.
Yeah, we're gonna.
I think we have.
And we're gonna probably have a special meeting in a week to ten days.
Okay.
Right after the rally.
Yeah. Okay, okay, okay. Now, now our next item of business is the motorsports track retaining wall update, um, Lisa.
So I guess I kinda covered that with a little bit of, that that one is just staying on the agenda, um, just so that we don't forget about it. So that one is just gonna be carried forward. So basically, tabling that till this fall when we determine where that spring is at and all of that. So there really isn't an update on that one at this point. I'm still waiting.
So, Al, if we went out there and we dug a trench across the backside of the grandstand down there with a backhoe or an excavator, you think we could find that spring?
Off the one they had in the middle of the track, I went over the hole, I dug a hole, put it in perfect place before we pulled the ground. Running out the end of it.
Yeah.
And it still does.
Yeah.
That was three years ago.
And it hasn't changed the one up?
No.
At all, so we've got, we've got two issues, in other words. We found that much out, yeah. And so that's probably the same solution for that high one too, but we still need retaining wall regardless, right?
I would believe.
Because what we had there is aged out. It's basically aged out, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, any, anybody else have any questions on that retaining wall? I guess we don't need to have any action on that at this point in time, so we'll move on to new business. The two thousand and twenty three state fair delegate de- designee.
Yep, so we just need to designate, um, who will represent at the state fair. Um, and I know the commission's got that on theirs as well, if we wanted to make a a recommendation to them on who they recommend. Dean's been the one, Dean Franchak, in the past, that's represented us. Um, Bernie will, well, you know what, I'm wrong.
Dean, I'm comfortable.
He's on the commission, sorry, yes.
Are you volunteering again?
He he's doing that, but Bernie actually is our park board representative.
I said, nobody in the past, it's been the the portfolio holder for the fair association, I guess, that attended it for Park Board.
Whatever you want me to do, I'll do it, it's fine too.
I I will appoint you. I I'm not sure if we need a motion on that. I guess we just, you're it, Bernie, you're the.
Sounds good.
Okay. And and then the next order of business is community event spending allocations.
Yep, so, um, it has been discussed amongst the auditor's office that, um, what we normally do, cause I'm really outside of anything that any other department does, so it's unusual, um, with our community events dollars that are allocated. How I handle that is, you know, we look at how many, um, events are happening and what those events are and what the best, um, determination is to get people to our community and get people at the fairgrounds and the Speedway um, to be able to to grow what we do for community events in Dickinson and the surrounding area, bringing people in. So what they're asking is that either we put together a list at the beginning of the year and have you guys approve that list of how it's going to do it, so they can write the check immediately. Um, I don't know if that has been anything that the commission has approved, um, at this point, um, to be able to do that. But, um, this month, so before our next meeting, I have two events that we've allocated some dollars to, um, and that's the Bull Team Challenge Infoturity and the PBR events that are happening before the next uh, commission meeting and park board meeting.
And those, okay, first, I'm kinda new to me, so.
I know, I'm losing you guys a little, I'm sorry. So usually I ask for.
The fair board has community event dollars budgeted?
No, the park board does.
The park board?
Yes, the park board does. And so that's in my budget, um.
Where do those dollars then go for the PBR? It goes to the promoter or?
Um, it depends. It, we write the check to the promoter so that we have somebody we can ten ninety nine for it, um, but they allocate it differently. So like, um, Rough Rider Commission, um, we support the, all of their events, so the Derby and those things. They they turn in their bills and say, this is how I spent the money. I approve it. We write them a check. And so some of it's for added dollars. Um, the PBR, they typically have two or three different things that they do, so we get the dollars for them. And so what I do is I get the documentation, I present it to, um, Sherry, um, in accounts payable, and she writes the check and I hand deliver the check. And we have to do that, and this is the the weird part about how we do it is because we're an outdoor facility, sometimes those events get canceled. And so we don't wanna hand over the dollars just because we said, hey, we've approved this. I hand it to them right before their event. Um, we did that with all of them.
And the Rough Rider Commission, you've always has a separate line item, right?
No.
What I remember, the Rough Rider Commission events were separate, and then you're.
It used to be, yeah.
Now you've got it in one bundle.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's actually in your budget right now?
Yes.
The hair, fair event activities.
Fair event activities and then community event activities. Yep, so anything that we do, um, within that timeframe of the fairs, we pull that monies in. Um, and then we just allocate it to the greatest events, the the events that we believe is gonna grow our community and grow, um, what we do as recreation.
I think the concern was the auditor's office, if some was paid, and then the commission didn't approve it, so let's avoid that.
So, that account is mixed with other accounts then, so.
Yeah, mine comes out of the general fund. Everything comes out of the general fund. I just allocate it so that you guys have an idea of how I'm using the dollars that you give me. Um, so every year, and I know a couple of you are new, so you haven't seen it yet. Um, but I do a budget justification, and I just write what I think we're gonna do. So if it's outside that budget, that's when I come and ask for different dollars and and for different reasons for things. But, um, you'll see that here shortly, as soon as the auditor gives us our initial budget numbers. But yes, it's all out of the general fund, and I just allocate it for my own record keeping, I guess.
With the fair association?
No, that's park board. Yeah, yeah, fair association's totally separate entity.
The the budget, well, that that young woman that was on the fair board puts that thing together for you, right? I mean, I can't remember her name, but she always has a an estimated cost, and then it would.
That's, that's what I put together.
Okay.
She's a young woman.
Yeah.
No, well.
Thank you for calling me young, but.
I might be mixed up here then, because, um, that girl that does the financials for the fair board always had the the allocated money and the actual cost, you know.
Oh, right, we do a profit and loss, um, on the fair board side, yes. Yep, yep, Shay Lee Brew is our new treasurer on that side, yes, you're correct. But we don't have that here. I just, I manually keep a little bit of a track of that, um, just so that we know where we are for dollars in that budget.
They get all their money from us?
Yes.
And is, so just one last question.
Sure.
The awarding of the community event dollars or the public dollars, I see Paul was able to bring it up, a hundred and twenty in one pool and fifty thousand in another pool.
Total.
So who, uh, who makes the determination of where those dollars go?
I do.
Fairbo, or the fair, or you're on the fair board too, or?
No, no, no. Um, so the fair board has nothing to do with these dollars. This is just the, just park board funds in my budget here. The fair board has their own budget, and they work within the dollars, um, with the, you guys give them a half a mil, and so they work within that on their side for for different events.
And you're comfortable unilaterally making those decisions? Because I mean, if I was in your position, I'd want a little bit of feed input on those decisions, but.
What's the typical ask from, I mean, how much is, how much goes out?
It depends on the event. I've got, I'll tell you right now what I do, I keep track of them. So like Home on the Range, we did partial fair board funded some of their added dollars. And then we did two thousand to the Home on the Range for their fundraising event. We did five thousand dollars at the Late Model Show. At the Speedway, they had a car show and race out there. We did three thousand dollars for the Memorial Day Extravaganza, and that was the three-day barrel race, actually four day this year, that came in that we pulled from Bismarck every year. We did, right now eighty-five thousand dollars has been totaled to Rough Rider Commission for their rodeo, the Derby and the concert in different, different amounts, but total. And then we will have, we allocated twenty-five hundred dollars for them for the, to bring in the breakaway into their rodeo. And then there was a significant cost, twenty-five hundred dollars for them to do the breakaway stock so that they could do that, it was outside their budget. And then the kids fair photographer.
So of the hundred and seventy thousand total available for fair and community events, actual for twenty twenty-three, where you think you're actually going to be on that? I mean, it doesn't look, doesn't sound like you're going to use it all, right?
I probably will between the bull riding faturity and the bull team and bull riding faturity and the PBR and that with that breakaway and that, it'll come close to it.
And having been, having been through this a couple of times, there are events we used to, to give money to that we no longer do because they just weren't good events and they weren't viable. And they, we just said, no, we're, we're not doing you next year. And one of them was the NDRA rodeo. I mean, it just, we didn't get entries and we didn't get a crowd. I mean, attendance, it just, so we just said, we're just not going to go forward with it anymore. And that, and in that regard, Lisa has done a good job of knowing, you know, what, what's working. I mean, the kids things have gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. I don't, I don't know if you're going to be, be able to do those for the same money you've been doing them because.
Well, and the fair board's got that one, you know, it's, we provide a free, it's a, everything is free there. And that, I think that's one of the biggest draws so that nobody, what their financial situation is, they can bring their kids out, the parents come out, have a little fun too.
Based on the numbers that Brian Gillick gave when he was giving his presentation to the county commissioners, you're only getting about ten percent of the kids, I'm guessing. And every year, you're going to get a few more.
It has been, yeah, every year it's more and more.
You could double your participation real easily. I mean, by word of mouth, those people have, they have a good day, they tell their friends. Pretty soon, instead of five hundred kids, you've got a thousand.
That's kind of how it's been going, doubling almost every year we've done.
So for instance, like the, the two thousand dollars in the, that we paid for the photography, is that coming out? Are these funds, the?
Yes.
Okay. I got you.
Yep.
Would you do like a monthly report and then state those, what you had planned for that? Would that help, I guess, for the auditor's office? That was something that we could approve that or what?
I, I can. So what I've got allocated for this month before the next meeting that would, I guess potentially need to be approved if you guys want to do it that way. I allocated twenty-three thousand to the Bull Team Infoturity event and then thirty-eight to the PBR for this, the next two.
Big ones, some numbers.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the Bull Team event is a fairly new one that we're hoping to grow, but he does such a good job with the PBR and that one is very well attended and he gets some big names up here.
I know there are, there are people that are just passionate about PBR and they are just waiting for. So what is it, what exactly is the Bull Team?
So the faturity is just like it is for horse racing or barrel racing for young bulls. So they'll have a competition there and then in the, that's at nine in the morning. And then at night, they'll actually have a Bull Team event. So every bull and rider is going to be teamed up with another bull and rider and they'll have this team and they compete, they ride and compete and they'll take home some dollars.
They do elimination rounds?
Yes.
That's kind of exciting. Do they do a Calcutta?
They do.
Yeah. Yeah. That'll get really popular real fast.
I think so. And, and he kind of did this in, in place of our fall PRCA rodeo that was a failure for the last couple of years. And so that's why we've kind of just switched gears and said, let's do something a little different and let that recover. And then eventually he wants to do a PRCA rodeo, just wants to be better planned for it so that it's a success as well.
Do, do we need an action on this?
We would need a motion for this one, just so she can write the checks based on what their plan is, what they want to do.
So the, the, the two amounts were what again?
Yep, twenty-three thousand to the Bull Team Challenge and then thirty-eight thousand to the PBR.
I would entertain a motion to allocate those funds for community event.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second that we allocate the, the twenty-three and thirty-eight?
Yes.
Thousand to the two events. I suppose we need to do a roll call vote. Corey?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carrying. I guess that brings us to the end of our meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before you adjourn, I'm just going to let you know I sent, Randy, you don't have your email, but I sent the rest of you commissioners the link again to the AG's office for special meeting notices. I sent it to Karen as well, so when you're going to have a special meeting, just let her know and she'll get it all.
I, I still have the one you sent me before, so.
This one was just updated, it looks like seven twenty twenty-three, that's the new date on it, so you can ref, read just.
Well, you can send it to randy@earthking.net.
Earth King?
Earth King.
Okay.
I, I have one item, and I don't know how we address this, it's not.
Oh, we already adjourned.
Did we get in? No, we didn't get in.
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
I don't know how to address this because it's not on the agenda, but at one point there was some discussion about getting Lisa a pickup for her. Or a blazer or a vehicle, doesn't matter what, what it is. But there was some discussion about getting her a vehicle for running back and forth between here and the, and the, and the fairgrounds and whatever, you know, she's doing, she's running around a lot with her own personal vehicle right now. And I wonder if that makes any sense at all.
Well, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, give, give, give us a little synopsis of what kind of miles you're putting on.
A lot.
Yeah.
I, I actually, I think, I can't remember what, it was almost thirteen hundred miles in the one month of June, I believe it was. And that's with our big rodeos and that for running around, hanging posters for events and just going back and forth. And I know that will eliminate if we ever have a building out there because I'll have an office out there. But for now, it's running back and forth here to the safe and to do different things here. And then just all around the fairgrounds, there's one side by side. We used to have two out there, but there's just one and with somebody else out there, they need to use that as well. So there's just some things running out to the, to the Speedway, you know, that miles just add up.
Do, do we have a pool of vehicles here at the county?
I, I just discussed this a little bit with the sheriff's department. Are they out of vehicle that was probably coming available? Is that available yet, Corey? There was, and they're talking about a blazer from the civil department, is that being traded or what's done with that one? I thought that one you were switching out with your plan was in July, but.
Goes fast.
Goes fast, yeah.
Put signs up.
As long as you give her some lights so she can make them hundred mile an hour trips down to the racetrack.
Yeah. And there's, there's also, I mean, we do have the vehicle that's in the shed back here. Typically, I think the only people are using it is the assessor.
Yeah, the, the tax director, tax director uses that vehicle, we have a vehicle in the garage or two.
You know, so, yeah, I think between that and if we do something in that regard, that would help eliminate your personal miles or reduce them, yeah.
And we're into our new vehicle and everything else, yeah. Insurance.
So that's, that's probably a, an action for the commission to do then, right? Because it's your, it's commission's vehicle.
Yeah. But I'm glad that Commissioner Clarence brought that up.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, you know, needed to be addressed. So can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved second.
So we moved in second, we adjourned all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, meeting adjourned.
We'll reconvene the county commission meeting at eleven fifty.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
She's planning, she's pre-planning.
She gets us with the little one first.
I might as well do the little one first, yeah. This one really is more of being proactive, of letting you know that we are going to need to move forward. It's no request for today, but I always like to stay in front of it for information, is that we're now going to be replacing number four truck. And that truck was, is a nineteen eighty-six truck that's being replaced, thirty-four hundred gallons. They've been trying to get bids from other companies, which actually hasn't been as easy as you would think. We've had two bids submitted so far, and this one right here is the lower one, at about roughly three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And this is a four thousand gallon tank, just a little bit of the schematics for you to take a look at. It's tough, you just don't order one now, you have to be proactive and say, we gotta do this or we don't, because it's a two-year project. And even that last one that we did was a two-year project for that. So we had to make the decision to go ahead to do this, you're going to see the budget draft that we have here. This is looking at what will be coming up for next year. It shows a deficit of forty-five thousand nine hundred and two dollars, but in reality, taking what we do have for the balance in our savings, we still will be carrying over money. So, if you take a look on-
You have the money to pay for this right off the top?
Excuse me?
You have the money to pay for this right off the top?
Not right off the top, that's why I'm being proactive on this, because it's a two-year process.
I just knew you said it, that's what I was going with.
Yeah, yeah, well, and you'll see part of that, when, you know, we still have the radios to finish up, so there'll be about fifty-five thousand dollars plus on those radios, we'll get a reimbursement of about thirty thousand on that. So it's going to still cost us about twenty-five just on those radios. And you'll also see that a grass truck was purchased, and then that was in that fifty-six thousand, fifty thousand of that is what the board paid for. So that's a truck that didn't come to you guys, that's brand new, that just got out there. So that's why you see that, but if it's the top there, you'll see where we have our checking savings and all that, of the hundred and ninety-three finishing up the year. We hold about fifty thousand in emergency reserves, in case something comes up. So, looking at that budget deficit, we're looking at about ninety-seven thousand right now, to put towards a truck, but also for cash flow, in between that time when we're getting our other funds back. So, that's what we're trying to look at, what we can do right now. I've also contacted the state again, because last time through the North Dakota Land Trust was the emergency infrastructure grant. That's not available any longer, it's there online, but the legislature's not appropriated funds through the last two bienniums, even though it is in North Dakota Centric Code, that this program be there and those funds be there. So we're going to probably be visiting with Karen proactive at the next session coming up, that this gets put back, not just for us, but for everybody, for different needs coming forward, and maybe that would be less of a strain than again, because that last truck, we were able to get over a hundred and eighty-five thousand on that last one that we received, so that was a really valuable program for us. So, right now, like I said, I'm just putting that in front of you, so that you're aware of it. We're going to try to do other things that we can, whether it be a grant through, you know, possibly oil companies, or wherever we can. I've tried to do things through BNSF, because obviously that railroad track going through there, that's really not a- They just are not receptive to that, even though I think they should be.
So do you have to put a deposit down on the truck, or do you have to pay for the truck to order it?
We have to put a deposit down, and so that's will be the next thing that happens with that, yes.
How much is that going to be?
I think, I think they said about twenty thousand, I don't quote me on it, but, yeah, we have to do something to make sure it's-
And the eighty-six truck probably has some value.
Possibly, yeah, yeah.
We hope.
We'll see. Well, and sometimes, I think, you know, that I've also heard, at times, when we sell the truck, is, you know, somebody that's got a farmer ranch, is more than happy to buy that, especially for, you know, when they're out there harvesting.
Well, I don't know if it was two years ago that you came in and that we got some help. You also went to Dunn County, because you do have a portion of your district in Dunn County, so-
Yes, yes, and we do, you're right, what we've done is, I've taken a look at the landmass, and it's approximately seventy percent in Stark and thirty in Dunn. And Dunn has been real generous, we got a Tahoe, coupled up with one of those Humvees, different things like that, that they had extra equipment for too, so they've been very generous.
The amount of people that you actually serve has grown quite a bit here in the last ten years, for sure, with all the extended growth east of Dickinson, I would say.
Yeah, the Green River subdivision out in that whole area has gotten quite large compared, actually now there's another one just east of where I live, too, east of Lumens over there, so that will be going in with some, so it has changed quite a bit, the value of those homes and the value of what they put on there is quite high also, so you're looking at a whole different set of property than what we had just a few short years ago.
Just so the commission knows, I've been working a lot with the rural fire departments on getting their budgets and everything in a good, timely matter and more thorough, and they have really all stepped up to the plate, and now you are able to come into my office as of, well, it'll be August tenth, because I still have a couple more that are due, and you're able to see their complete budget and their breakdown and their balances, anything that you would like, if you have any question about their funding. So I have been putting that together, and they've all been submitting, and they've been doing a very good job, and all been coming up to compliance with what they need for, if they were to get audited by the state, so just wanted to let the commission know that they have all been participating in that very well.
Well, I think we want to be supportive of the rural fire departments, the question that's in the back of my mind would be, are there requests, or will there be requests from the other ones, and, you know, how much do we have to allocate to the various agencies? So, I mean, obviously, but, so I don't know if you need an immediate decision on this, if we can buy some time to kind of monitor what the other ones might be doing. I don't know if that's an overreach, but-
Well, I certainly, you know, up to you guys, I don't know that you would probably get a lot of input back on if they need a new one for, or not, you know, for the-
Other equipment, so let's say the Taylor Fire Department, they want something, you know, how does that play in to all the requests from the rural fire departments?
Sure.
Across the board is what we're on that.
I don't know that you're going to really know until they come up there, though. I mean, I couldn't tell you that, because you won't know until they get there, unless you put it out to them.
Right, and eventually, Taylor will come to us with something, and Battlefield will come to, everybody will at some point, everybody-
Yeah, and I guess, you know, for this one with the generator, we're looking at as a public safety center beyond what, you know, our regular equipment that we would come and ask for.
So I know, for example, I've known fire departments in the past, if they shut down an interstate and there's a bus on the interstate, goes to a rural town or whatever, they open up the fire department, let people have a bed, have electricity. So that's enough to generate enough electricity for that department?
Yes.
Okay.
If the commission is interested in paying for their new generator as a public safety center, I would probably say that account-wise, I would probably look to taking that out of, I do still have some CARES Act funding left, I would say about thirty-eight thousand, and so this could come out of that CARES Act funding that will eventually need to be transferred, if they wanted to take it out of a fund without it affecting other funds.
And does that CARES Act, does that expire?
That expired a while ago.
I mean, but the money that we have, they're not going to take it back from us?
No.
Okay.
I would make the comment that, I mean, I'm in full support of this, but I would say that the minute we do this, that the other departments will be here five minutes later asking for their next thing, which I'm fine with too, we should support them all. You know, there should be some equity across this thing, for sure.
It's not a lot of, it's not ten thousand dollars, really, it's-
Yeah. But it's going to a really good cause, and we need to support those guys.
Yep. Well, I guess I'll make the motion then to give them the ten thousand five hundred forty dollars, if that's what they're asking for.
Do you have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, then Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarence.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Then you have another agenda item with the fire truck?
Yeah.
Well, here comes the next one, you're right now.
She didn't even leave the podium yet.
She's planning, she's pre-planning.
She gets us with the little one first.
I might as well do the little one first, yeah. This one really is more of being proactive, of letting you know that we are going to need to move forward. It's no request for today, but I always like to stay in front of it for information, is that we're now going to be replacing number four truck, and that truck was, is a nineteen eighty-six truck that's being replaced, thirty-four hundred gallons, they've been trying to get bids from other companies, which actually hasn't been as easy as you can think, that you would think. We've had two bids submitted so far, and this one right here is the lower one, at about roughly three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And this is a four thousand gallon tank, just a little bit of the schematics for you to take a look at. It's tough, you just don't order one now, you have to be proactive and say, we gotta do this or we don't, because there's like, it's a two-year project, and even that last one that we did was a two-year project for that. So we had to make the decision to go ahead to do this, you're going to see the budget draft that we have here. This is looking at what will be coming up for next year, it shows a deficit of forty-five thousand nine hundred and two dollars, but in reality, taking what we do have for the balance in our savings, we still will be, will be carrying over money. So, if you take a look on-
You have the money to pay for this right off the top?
Excuse me?
You have the money to pay for this right off the top?
Not right off the top, that's why I'm being proactive on this, because it's a two-year process.
I just knew you said it, that's what I was going with.
Yeah, yeah, well, and you'll see part of that, when, you know, we still have the radios to finish up, so there'll be about fifty-five thousand dollars plus on those radios, we'll get a reimbursement of about thirty thousand on that, so it's going to still cost us about twenty-five just on those radios. And you'll also see that a grass truck was purchased, and then that was in that fifty-six thousand, fifty thousand of that is what the board paid for. So that's a truck that didn't come to you guys, that's brand new, that just got out there. So that's why you see that, but if it's the top there, you'll see where we have our checking savings and all that, of the hundred and ninety-three finishing up the year. We hold about fifty thousand in emergency reserves, in case something comes up. So, looking at that budget deficit, we're looking at about ninety-seven thousand right now, to put towards a truck, but also for cash flow, in between that time when we're getting our other funds back. So, that's what we're trying to look at, what we can do right now. I've also contacted the state again, because last time through the North Dakota Land Trust was the emergency infrastructure grant. That's not available any longer, it's there online, but the legislature's not appropriated funds through the last two bienniums, even though it is in North Dakota Centric Code, that this program be there and those funds be there. So we're going to probably be, as visiting with Karen proactive at the next session coming up, that this gets put back, not just for us, but for everybody, for different needs coming forward, and maybe that would be less of a strain than again, because that last truck, we were able to get over a hundred and eighty-five thousand on that last one that we received, so that was a really valuable program for us. So, right now, like I said, I'm just putting that in front of you, so that you're aware of it. We're going to try to do other things that we can, whether it be a grant through, you know, possibly oil companies, or wherever we can. I've tried to do things through BNSF, because obviously that railroad track going through there, and that's really not a- They just are not receptive to that, even though I think they should be.
So do you have to put a deposit down on the truck, or do you have to pay for the truck to order it?
We have to put a deposit down, and so that's will be the next thing that happens with that, yes.
How much is that going to be?
I think, I think they said about twenty thousand, I don't quote me on it, but, yeah, we have to do something to make sure it's-
And the eighty-six truck probably has some value.
Possibly, yeah, yeah.
We hope.
We'll see. Well, and sometimes, I think, you know, that I've also heard, at times, when we sell the truck, is, you know, somebody that's got a farmer ranch, is more than happy to buy that, especially for, you know, when they're out there harvesting.
Well, I don't, I can't remember if it was two years ago that you came in and that we got some help. You also went to Dunn County, because you do have a portion of your district in Dunn County, so-
Yes, yes, and we do, you're right, what we've done is, I've taken a look at the landmass, and it's approximately seventy percent in Stark and thirty in Dunn. And Dunn has been real generous, we got a Tahoe, coupled up with one of those Humvees, different things like that, that they had extra equipment for too, so they've been very generous.
You're, the amount of people that you actually serve has grown quite a bit here in the last ten years, for sure, with all the extended growth east of Dickinson, I would say, so-
Yeah, the Green River subdivision out in that whole area has gotten quite large compared, actually now there's another one just east of where I live, too, east of Lumens over there, so that will be going in with some, so it has changed quite a bit, the value of those homes and the value of what they put on there is quite high also. So you're looking at a whole different set of property than what we had just a few short years ago.
Just so the commission knows, when I talked to the individual rural fire departments, I told them on their budgets to put in there, if they know of any upcoming large purchases or anything like that, so that they could start justifying why they're putting money aside for it, like with Gladstone, you know, ninety-something thousand dollars will be the first amount that they're able to put aside for it, so they are able to cover a chunk of it. So we are going to see on quite a few of their budgets here, because it takes more than one year to buy a fire truck, a two or even four-year, like we need to replace this, this and this, and an estimated cost, and what they're putting aside the money for, and they're going to be doing that across the board for the rural fire departments.
So I would have a question, Karen, I guess, so that Stark County mill levy, who sets that number? Is that a statute, by state statute, each rural fire department gets so many mills, or how does it set?
They're only allocated, actually by Centric Code, to do up to five mills, But we only have one fire department that mills under that ten-mill mark in, in that South Heart. And they don't even, they haven't went to a vote or authorized by a vote to go over five. And Dunn County's values for that thirty percent that they're covering in Gladstone, that's also included in the, I add theirs together and tell them where they need to be at mill-wise.
Okay, any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move up Sunrise Youth, Holly Prowse.
Good morning, or good afternoon. I'm Holly Prowse. I'm the Director of Sunrise Youth Bureau.
And I'm Amber Hofstadt. I'm the Youth Advisor.
Thanks so much for adding us into your agenda today. We are basically here to talk about what we do at Sunrise Youth Bureau, give your, our yearly report to you guys. If it wasn't for Starr County, Sunrise Youth Bureau would not be in existence. For the past multiple years, you guys have provided one-mill levy along, along with utilities and our office space. Being there's a couple of new county commissioners, I will explain our programming. If you look, one of the reports I gave was the twenty-twenty-two annual report and it kind of shows our numbers. So we do, of course, get the most funding from Starr County, but we also provide the most services to Starr County. That's where a huge amount of our services are when it, when it comes to families and children. And we have all of the programming broken down and how many kids that we've seen for each program. So, and it also shows like our amount received. We are nonprofit, so we do ask for funding from the surrounding eight counties, as well as the city of Dickinson and some other like miscellaneous income, as well as United Way. So our programming would be shelter care and attendant care and that's where we can actually house youth. We can house up to six children at a time from the ages of ten to seventeen. We have three bedrooms and a bunk bed in each bedroom. So attendant care is when law enforcement brings in a juvenile and they have a delinquent offense. So whether it's like disorderly conduct, and we can house them there. And that's where we get reimbursement from the North Dakota Association of Counties. And shelter care is if a youth is brought in with either, I would say, like unruly, runaway, truancy, charge, they can be brought there. We also work very closely with social services or our zones if they need a place for a kiddo to go. A child can stay up to seven days and if they need to stay longer, we can request another seven days. So a total of fourteen days. So whether it's a kiddo that can't be at home and maybe they can go to home on the range and there's a little gap of a time where a child needs placement, that's where Sunrise Youth Bureau can come into play. We have about ten part-time on-call attendant care, shelter care workers. Amber and I are on-call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week throughout the whole year. So law enforcement or the social worker can always get ahold of us at any time. Another program that we do, we actually have a contract with, sorry, just lost my train of thought. What's that? Oh, talking about diversion, juvenile court. So we work closely with juvenile court through the diversion program and that's what Amber does. So I'll let her explain that program.
So diversion is when a child is cited with a first-time offense or a minor offense, juvenile court kind of looks at that case and decides what to do with it. And typically they try and keep them out of the court system and we're lucky to have a diversion program here in Dickinson where they can divert youth over to the Sunrise Youth Bureau. So when I get a case, it's typically, like I said, a low-level delinquent offense, simple assault, disorderly conduct, minor in possession, things, shoplifting, things like that. The child and the family comes in and meets with me and they follow through with me like they would at court. I have an open case on them for a while. They have consequences such as classes at the youth bureau. So an alcohol class, a vaping class, shoplifting, anger management, self-esteem. They also can have community service, letters of apology, restitution, whatever we can come up with, that's something they can learn from. We hold them accountable, yet we try and work with them on their level to help them learn from their mistakes and to make better choices in the future. Once they complete our diversion program, I get back to juvenile court and we close out their case with them. If they refuse to work with us, then they will possibly face an informal court hearing date. So it's basically an opportunity to avoid court for them. So along with diversion is we also have crisis intervention. So it's basically the same concept, but there doesn't have to be a charge. So any parent can call and say, I'm having issues with my kid. I caught them vaping. I caught them shoplifting. They're being unruly at home. And they don't have to be cited to come work with us because of the county's support. We're there to just have our programs available so they can take an anger management class or a shoplifting class, or we can educate them on alcohol and vaping, just to be there for the family in any way we can.
And then we have prevention education and this is where we go out to the surrounding schools. So our youth educator Shannon sends out a letter at the beginning of the school year saying the curriculum that we can provide. And the school is able to contact us and she stays really busy with that. We feel like prevention is key to help further assist with future issues with these kids. We have curriculum from preschool age all the way up to seniors and high school. So she stays really busy throughout the school year, going to the surrounding schools, a lot of Dickinson schools and to help do those prevention programs. We don't charge the school again because we get county funding. So there's no fee for her to go into the classrooms. And then we also do auto-school suspension and we work with a lot of local schools here. This last year was our first year that we actually had a contract with Dickinson Middle School to provide services and we feel that went really well. So if a child gets into trouble at school, rather than sending them home for the day and letting them play video games at home, not having supervision, they can actually come to Sunrise and we supervise them throughout the day and make sure they get their homework done and kind of give them some sort of education on why they get into trouble. So if they're being delinquent in the classroom and being disrespectful to the teacher, we can kind of counsel them on that and how, you know, if they continue this behavior, what could happen and work, work really closely with the area schools. So just to kind of give you an idea for this year, for twenty-twenty-three for prevention, Shannon did a hundred and nineteen classes in Starr County and saw two thousand four hundred and twenty students. For the diversion program, we had sixty-seven from Starr County and that's out of eighty-seven. So again, the majority of the kids that we do see do come from Starr County. And then for attendant care and shelter care, for, for just this year, we've had thirty-seven stay in our attendant care, shelter care program. Trying to think if I'm missing anything. I think that's basically a summary of the services that we can provide or we do provide. Did you guys have any questions for us?
So how many young people can you have there at any given time?
So just for the shelter care program, we can have house up to six kids at a time. Yeah, and it's been really busy. There's been times where we've been full and there was a situation that we actually had that we had to have an additional kiddo or get shelter care certified for an additional kiddo because there was kind of an emergency situation where they need extra kids to come to Sunrise, so.
So then when you have, you're working with a juvenile system, you have a first-time offender and they come to you, what is the percentage of them that do not reoffend?
Actually, it's pretty decent. I would say our rate for not reoffending is pretty decent. I can't give you a number right off the top of our head, but I can tell you Amber's very strict with them and she really explains the process that if you continue down this path, like this is what's going to happen. So we don't typically see a lot of reoffenders. And if they come through Sunrise and they continue to reoffend, that's when Chase with juvenile court really gets involved and, you know, puts the hammer down to these kids and does his job, I guess. But it is an opportunity for them to come to us. We try to keep kids out of the juvenile justice system and that's why Sunrise is here.
And do you have a lot of parents that call you on their own?
We do.
Yeah.
We take a lot of parent referrals and actually that's what we prefer. We prefer working with a parent and a child having issues rather than them getting a citation or, you know, dealing with law enforcement.
Mostly are they junior high or the middle school or the, I guess there's no more junior high. So are they middle school or the high, high school? What are their?
I would say middle school or younger. When we first started, we've been at Sunrise for a lot of years. When we first started, it was sixteen, seventeen-year-olds and now we're seeing like eight to twelve-year-olds probably. With the same issue. Vaping's a hu- huge issue. Vaping THC is a huge issue. Fighting at school is a huge issue. What am I missing? Those are a lot of things that we're seeing, increased alcohol. When we first started, it was all underage drinking and then it went through a span that there was barely any underage drinking and now that's starting to skyrocket again. Sorry, go ahead.
So with diversion or crisis intervention, like if we get a vaping charge or a minor in consumption charge, once we're talking to the youth, we typically see there's so many underlying issues. So a lot of times a kid might walk away with a self-esteem class on top of their alcohol class or an anger management class because they're going through something at home or have past trauma. So we really feel like we get through to the, try and get through to the root of the issue and, and work with them on, on those type of levels too.
Self-esteem, mental health, of course, you guys know, mental health and addiction is a huge problem right now. We are seeing a lot of that with the youth too.
And I don't mean to interject, but one thing that we've been seeing a lot, there was an overhaul with the juvenile rules or statutes. I think it was not this last previous legislative, legislative session, but the one before. And so they took things like runaway out of the unruly and the amount of runaways that we are seeing is just astronomical. And I know that Sunrise has been really integral in, in dealing with runaways because we can't place them at YCC. We know they're fleeing. They're not staying at home. They're not staying under, you know, they're not listening to their parents. So Sunrise has really done a lot, has really stepped up in that aspect as well.
Thank you. And we do, runaways has been a huge issue. And a kid will come into our agency and basically say, if I get put back home, I will run. They're honest with us. We don't see a lot of them running from Sunrise just because we do treat them well there. They're taken care of, you know what I mean? And they actually like to be at Sunrise compared to what may be going on at home. And they will be honest with us as well as a social worker that if you put me home, I'm just going to run again.
Any other questions? Not, thank you for the work you do.
Well, thank you guys. If it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't be here. So we appreciate your guys' support with our agency and what we can provide to our community.
Okay, thanks for the report. Next, who's the recorder? Kim Cassian?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Kim Cassian, Starr County Recorder. I'm here today to talk to you about moving my part-time position into a full-time position as far as one of my employees. Right now, currently in my office, I have two part-time employee temporary positions and I would like to move both of those positions into a full-time status. Seeing the influx with passports that we've had in our department and we need the extra help. So moving her to full-time would greatly benefit our office. So I'm asking for-
So then there's really no change to your budget, just a change just for time before?
Not at this point. And right now I have that one part-time temporary position open. None of those funds have been used this year and I'm hoping to use the rest of the, combine it and even that would not use the rest of the funds that are in the budget for, since half of those funds haven't even been used for half of the year, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Eliminating two part-time positions and making one full-time position.
Correct, yeah. And with the possibility in the future, maybe keeping that temporary part-time position a background, just in case, you know, we have to, you know, if we get busier, we might have a need for a part-time position in the future. But right now I'd like to keep it as the full, or put it into the full-time position currently.
Without your part-time mostly?
So Andrea is one of my part-time employees and the other part-time, she had made a comment that she was going to come back in the beginning of this year. She had some health issues that, but she's since retired. And so that position has been open during that timeframe. And so we just haven't hired because there was this possibility that we like, we wanted to move the part-time position into a full-time.
Any other questions? I look for a motion on this matter then.
So you're, you're looking to make two part-times into one full-time?
Yes.
Okay. The same thing we discussed the other day?
Yes.
So how many hours are the part-times? You got one part-time that's not even there anymore and you have one part-time.
Correct.
Combined, how many hours a week do they work?
So combination between the two was, one was fifteen and the other one was twenty hours. So the combined, the full-time would make it the full forty hours. But total hours would have been like thirty-five-ish roughly for both of them, so. Within the two-week timeframe. And then I also would like to ask if we can make it to where she's kind of started full-time as of yesterday so we can get it on a full two-week pay period to start her out rather than waiting another two weeks to, for August fourteenth for the full-time status, which is this would be the start of the new pay period for the next two weeks, so. If feasible.
So the start date would be?
As of yesterday. But in, if this doesn't get approved or if we decide to go for the August fourteenth for the next time card, I can have her flex her hours this week. That way she wouldn't be over her current status.
Well, I'll make the motion that the recorder's part-time employee can move into the full-time position and eliminate her, eliminate her part-time position.
Effective July thirty-first.
Effective July thirty-first.
Now, motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any other discussion?
One last thing and then you'll work with Joanna to get compensation on that. I saw she sent out a thing this morning on that as well.
Yep, and that, and that'll be kind of changed for next year's budget once preliminary stuff gets, it'll be kind of changed in that budget period, so.
All right.
Okay, any other discussion then? Roll call vote then. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarence.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we planning and zoning. Steve Josephson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Steve Josephson, County Planner. You have before you a request for rezoning. It's by Skyline Assets. It's located in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter in Government Lot Four of Section Seven. Township one forty, Range ninety-six, approximately seventy-two acres. The applicants wish to rezone this from agriculture to rural residential. Those are minimum lot size of five acres. They, they also plan to subdivide this property into thirteen lots. That will be, when the final plan comes, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that'll, that'll come to the County Commission for final approval. Both staff, both county, the County Planning and Zoning Commission and staff did recommend approval. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions on this zoning change?
So this might be premature, but when they come back to us, do you know how big the lots are going to be at then?
There's a preliminary.
I'm just looking right in the sea.
Oh, yeah, that, from the preliminary plan, they're going to be about five acres in size. You can see from that it's uniform. And there are other lots just to the, just to the southwest of it. There are some small lots there. Within a mile, I think a mile, there's the Peterson subdivision and I think those are seven-acre lots. Plus the southeast corner of that lot actually touches the city's extraterritorial zone. So the growth pattern for five-acre lots is there.
Any other questions? Look for a motion then to approve this rezoning from ag to rural residential.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve the rezoning for RZ zero-three dash two-three Skyline Assets, rezoning from agricultural to rural residential. The land's located in Township one forty north, Range ninety-six west, Section Seven, southeast quarter of the southwest quarter and Lot Four of Section Seven. I'll second that.
Motion to second, any other discussion? Roll call vote then, Commissioner Clares?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Masser?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I'll notify the applicant's representative. Thank you very much.
Do you have any updates on the comprehensive plan? Is that, moving forward with that or?
At this point, I know that the consultants are, are put, have been putting together an advisory, an advisory committee and they are going to schedule a meeting for that, I believe in late August.
August 29th, I believe.
August 29th and then they're also organizing some public, public input workshops. That'll be, that'll be the last week in September.
Okay.
So that's what's going on with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Natalie Wander.
Chairman, members of the board, I'm Natalie Wander, the Starr County Tax Director. I have two items today. One of them is just our service contract with Complex. That is the company that does all of our industrial appraisals. There's no change. He didn't go up, go down, nothing. It's the same what we pay every, the last two years, we've been paying the same amount. So it's basically just a request for Dean to sign it if it's something we want to keep doing, but I would highly recommend we keep doing these.
Madam, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize the chairman to sign the assessment service contract with Colpex Ariel.
That's second.
Motion to second, any other discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, uh?
Okay, and then the other thing that I have is in June of 2020, we had a hearing or we, yeah, we had a hearing and did all the work to vacate a street in Frank's Ford subdivision and that resolution never got recorded. So basically I've copied an old resolution and gave it to Karen and it's just because it's a different board now and it's, I mean, Karen's got to sign it and so does Dean and I think it would have been Pete and I don't even know at that time, but it never got recorded. So Russ Keplin come in trying to do some digging and they couldn't find anything that said he owned it and so he ran into the issue. So I said, well, we'll take care of it for you. So I think Karen's given you where it was approved in the motion in 2020. I have all the paperwork, I mean.
We certainly don't have to re-notice that now. So I'll move we authorize the chair and the auditor to sign the petition for vacation.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, any other discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, CD renewals with auditor, Karen?
Okay, so we had two CDs that came up for renewal in July and just so the commission knows that it had been discussed previously that I would do the same thing and send out to all of the banks and they would return to me their rates, their best available rates at the time and based on the maturity date. I can't really do them a month ahead of time because they won't know their best available rate until, until closest to the term that that CD is maturing. These are the banks that I reached out to and got responses for, for percentages and I just take the best rate offered between the banks. And that we, that was, we had one CD that we renewed at $500,000 and another one we renewed at $250,000. Bavera won both of those at that 5.36% for one year. I do not send back out to the banks asking them to increase their bids because I feel like if I'm asking for bids, they should be giving us the best available one and it's not really fair. So that's just how I've been doing it. If the commission wants it done some other way, they'll have to inform me, but that's, that's how we've been doing it.
Choice Bank, there's nothing there in Choice Bank because they have responded?
Yeah, I didn't get anything back for them on this one, but they've been a little bit lower than the five, at least 5% on the last one that I did. So I'm just not sure if they're, you know, if they were interested in these ones.
Okay, so last month we had a discussion, we had a CD renewal and is that, these are different?
These are different.
They're two different.
Yep, these are two ones that came up in July.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to my point from last month, which is this board needs to renew those and/or authorize you to renew, renew those because of just, I think because of the authority, because we're the financial board, you know? And if there is a deadline like the 19th of July, I really don't see any issue where you couldn't take an expiring CD, put it in that new account that you've created, that you're getting money on or whatever and then authorizing the board to renew it. I just, I, I just think that we need to follow that protocol unless I'm misinterpreting what's...
Well, I will, I will say, Commissioner Masser, the previous protocol that you guys had put forward to me was this process of sending out to the banks and then going with the highest rate that was received back. So if you're, if you're looking to change that, I'm...
Well, that's not what I remember. I remember originally a year ago or two years ago, having the conversation that you would shop it and then at least check with the chair for authorization to renew it. So it wasn't a sole decision, but I'll do whatever the board wants, but I just think we're, we're the financial board. I think we need to.
You know, what's in our package is what was the last two that we approved last meeting, but there's two more that are now.
These are the ones that were approved in July. Last meeting was the ones that had went through in June or the beginning of July. It was June.
So last, last month we made a motion to approve, these are them?
No, these are two different.
These are ones that matured on July 19th, 2023.
Wouldn't be natural then that the board would approve the renewal of the CD? I think, just my opinion.
And the, that's the nice part about the DDM account, it does give us a little bit of flexibility. I, I mean, and I don't, what is the current rate at the DDM, do you know?
We're at 4.75. 465.
So are we needing a motion to approve this or where are we going with this?
Well, they're already renewed, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, they're already renewed through Bavera. I just, I mean, is there something that the commission, is there another bank that they want it to be sent out to or are you not liking that?
No.
He's saying he wants us to approve them, I guess, to go through the commission and approve.
We're the financial board and so the financial decisions and actions should be of the full county commission. That's just my opinion. I, I would hope that you would want that as well so that you have a backup to any decision you make, so.
And I appreciate the effort, honestly.
Yeah. Last month, I said, I appreciate the recommendation. Karen should make a recommendation, hey, renew this at 5.36 for 12 months. We'll take it, but it's our responsibility to do that, so. Okay. We're good.
Okay.
We don't need a motion then to renew it as long as you're ready?
Yeah, I, I, that, that is totally fine. I just, my, my only thing is they're not going to give us our best rates by the commission meeting for you to decide before I renew them. So I guess you'll just have to decide how you want me to do that portion.
Well, that's, I think the point that Paul just made was if it falls in the middle of a month like this, you can roll it into the DDM account for, till the next commission meeting.
So you want them rolled into the DDM account?
What is the typical turnaround time? Would they give you that rate? It's got to be you guys snap it up by, you have a deadline? I mean, as far as?
So this, looks, was this one expired in the beginning of July, right?
That maturity date is the day that it expired.
Okay, on the 19th?
Yes, and so I give them that maturity date when I go to cash out the CD. So the, the CDs were actually with a different bank and when I sent out for the bids, because they matured on that date, those are the bids that I got back.
And once you get the bid, how long do you got before you can switch over? Do they say you have to do it right away? Do you?
Well, I just do it, I've just, I guess I've done it for the la, well, since 2021, I've just done it as soon as we cashed those out from that bank that it was at. If it switched banks, then I would take the check over and put it into the new CD for that amount.
But like, for instance, in this case Bavera quoted you 5.36, that's good for 10 days, five days?
You know, I, I've never even asked, but I can definitely find that out if it's good for so many days. I'm assuming that they would honor it, you know?
If they would honor it until the next kind of commission, then that would be awesome if they'd give us a two-week grace or whatever it is. Yeah.
And I can find, I can find that part out.
Okay.
Next, do we have outstanding checks to be canceled?
We just have one check that we need to cancel. He has received notice, everything else, he just never cashed it, but we have to cancel it. So I just need the commission to make a motion to cancel this check.
I would make a motion to cancel check number 93927 for the amount of $8.99.
Motion to second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Then we go next, Fat Fish Alcohol Special Permit.
Okay, so we had a request for one of your alcohol special permits. It's not an event permit, so the alcohol one's coming for the commission is what we agreed on. And I don't see any issues with their application and Fat Fish does also have their county license to be able to sell out in the county. So I don't see any issues with approving this one for Fat Fish.
Anybody have any questions? I look for a motion to approve this special permit.
So moved.
A motion approved.
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, next we'll go to HR for the policy.
Good morning.
Good morning, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Joanna Piercey, Human Resources Director. I just brought this policy forward because the legislature passed an increase to the meal per diem. So you'll see on page two that the first quarter was increased to $9, second quarter 14 and third quarter $22. And then Sheri in Accounts Payable wanted me to add some clarifying language when people are charging gas. The only time they put it on their expense reports is when it's their personal credit card or they pay cash for it. If it's charged to an expense account or they're using a fuel card, then that's just going to be expense to their department. And then the other clarifying language was when people are traveling out of state, we're going to use the total meals and incidentals rate to calculate the 20%, 30% and 50% for the quarterly meals. I think that was it.
I have one thing on the per diem sheet that you sent out yesterday. It's, it's a minimal, but it, the tab on the Excel for that sheet still says 2022.
Oh, yeah. I noticed that. I'll have Sheri update that.
Okay, any other questions? Look for a motion to approve this policy change.
I'll move to approve the policy as submitted by HR.
You have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Clares?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a, I see we had an email yesterday, it came from Association of Counties on it and they wanted to make sure that we had a delegate designated for that convention come up in October. I know I was last year, I don't know if we want to change that to someone else or?
Dean, when we did the portfolios, I was kind of thinking that we did that during the portfolio time when we assigned department heads and I'm pretty sure you got blessed with that again.
Okay, I guess, just checking to see if you want to, anybody want to change?
Unless somebody wants to change it.
No, we're good.
Okay.
But speaking of Association of Counties, they, they do a tour, they take in like eight counties every year and we're going to be blessed with the Leadership Association of Counties out here on the 30th of October. And I can't remember if it's from 12 to two or two to four, but they will be in this room with us, so if you have...
It's two to four.
Two to four, okay.
Two to four, yeah. And make sure all department heads are here for that too.
Yeah.
August.
August 30th, yep, yep.
Yeah, make sure that all the department heads are invited for that too, I guess. Okay. And then you got a memorial bench replacement on the Cordell's property, do I need a motion if you want to approve that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that they work with Mike again as the location of that bench and the approval.
I think he's been discussing, there's some on that oval where the other benches are, there's some viable area there.
Yeah.
Okay, I look for a motion to approve that placing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And we need to approve the bills for the park board.
When do we make that motion?
I thought we pay, we pay them, so they recommended approval, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it, you got to make the motion.
I would make the motion to approve the bills for the park board in the amount of 18,000.
221.
221.
And also the other two fees that they were talking about for the upcoming events, the two events too?
Okay. That bull riding and the...
I think 23,000 and 38,000, I think, right?
Okay, I would, I consider, I would add to my motion to, to approve the expenditure out of those funds for the promotion of those events, the PBR and the, what is it? The...
Team.
Team Bull Events out at the Starr County Fairgrounds.
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Let's have a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote then, Commissioner Clares?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh? Commissioner Masser? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Anything else that we missed?
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.